Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session for Wednesday, April 17, 2024. It is 9:03 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and Commissioner Carolina McKee on Zoom. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gilder. For public virtual attendance, you can follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're here till noon, and the major topic is Budget 2024 Amendment One First Review. We have Nicole Martinez and her budget team all lined up to go through the various elements. I'm going to, I guess, ask the county manager to start and kick it where it needs to be kicked.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, and I want to just thank the budget team for all their hard work. I had a chance to review some of the documents, and they've put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this. So with that, does there anything you wanted to say as we hand over straight to people?
No, just right to the nipple. Take it away.
Yep.
Thank you, County Manager Nicole Martinez, Budget and Fiscal Manager. Thank you, Chair of the Board and Commissioners. As you have mentioned, our team is here from the Budget Office. So we have Dolly here. She's a Senior Management Analyst, as well as Jennifer. She's in the Commissioners' Office, the Budget Office. And we also have Melissa joining us from Financial Services from the Auditors Department. So as, yep, so as we go through the budget process, this is the team that's working on preparing the documents before you. So the 2024-2025 budget was adopted in December, and so we move into operating that budget. So we're in the 2024 fiscal year, and we're looking at our first amendment. So what I have before you is prepared a presentation just to do some high-level explanation as to what was included in the amendment when we went through the review process. And also, at the end of this presentation, and after we go through the budget lines today, I'll talk about how we're communicating with our citizens as far as amending the budget as well.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll just jump right to the Agenda page. So we're going to go through the amendment process. Again, that's identifying what is included in the amendment and where Washington law allows us to amend the budget. Then we'll go into the review of the amendment request. So that's going through line by line. That's the 11 by 17 packet there before you. We'll go into the forecast. So that's just a general fund forecast with all the amendment changes and what it would look like, and then next steps. So the next slide here is a slide that you've seen during the budget process, and it identifies GFOA's best practices in budgeting. There are five pillars here of budgeting, so I'll just name them here. They're establishing long-term vision. Pillar two speaks about building the trust and open communication. Pillar three, use collection and decision-making, collective decision-making. Four is to create clear rules, and five is to treat everyone fairly. I'd like to hone in on pillar four and five because we look to creating clear rules and also treating everyone fairly through the amendment process. And that has a lot to do with the Washington laws and how we interpret them, and as well as the instructions that are given to departments and offices when they're putting in their amendment request. And I'm going to jump right into those Washington laws and the budget instructions and what was put out before the Board, before the offices and departments, excuse me. So the first amendment here through the Revised Code of Washington is RCW 364100. And the reason why I'm pointing this out is that this gives the ability for the Board to make changes to the 2024-2025 biennial budget, so amendments, and supplemental appropriations. And the part highlighted there, it says that upon resolution, that the Board has the right to make these supplemental appropriations, and that they could be for transfers or revisions within the departments, also that they could be for unanticipated federal or state revenues or expenses associated with those revenues that we're getting in. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that this amendment process is in line with the Revised Code, and that's what we're going to use to base our instructions as to the departments and offices, what should be included in an amendment request. And Robin, feel free to jump in if you want to add anything.
Thank you.
So the next slide here is also bringing more attention to the Revised Code of Washington. So again, outlining 364100, 140, and 195 in that same area within the code. And this is basically saying that budget amendments are limited to emergencies, technical corrections, updates to the beginning fund balance, and new awards from outside services, sources. So this instruction is put in the beginning, and when we felt the 24-25 biennium, it speaks about what should be included in the beginning development and what should be included in an amendment. And again, this is given to all offices and departments, and they govern what is going to be in the packets before we start going through all the lines. So just to be more clear on what is included in an amendment, I'm just going to go down these bullets here. Unanticipated receipts where new revenue equals or exceeds new spending authority. So that is grant awards that came through to the county that the departments or offices didn't anticipate would fall through, increases in what they had estimated during the 24-25 budget, and the expenses or the authority to spend that new revenue. Fund balance adjustments. So at the end of the year, it's closed 2023. However, during the budget process, we don't know what the 2024 budget or beginning fund balance will be. We estimate. So now that the year has closed, we know finally what that beginning fund balance will be, so we make those adjustments in the budget as well. Any error or corrections or any mistakes found in the 2024-2025 budget? So not anything prior to 24-25, but if there was an error when we put together the biennial budget, maybe someone picked the wrong fund by accident, and they meant to say another one, or they left something out when we were doing changes or cleanups. And so that would be an error, and that you'll see within your packet as a technical correction. So that jumps to the next bullet there. So technical changes that net to zero. So that speaks again to errors or corrections that I just spoke to. Changes due to federal or state legislation. That would be something that you would see in the budget packet here. Emergent needs that may have come up and need to roll over. So anything that was budgeted in 2023 that was anticipated to be spent but wasn't, they're asking to roll that over. So that would be something that would be included.
So again, what you see, a common theme throughout these is that the vast majority are things that we could not have anticipated at the time the Board adopted the budget, or it was so fresh that there was nothing we could do to get it in. So really, we focus on making changes, hopefully minor changes, for the most part, to things we didn't know about at the time you adopted the budget.
So then the next slide is to go in what is not included in the amendment. So this would be new policies or expanded programs. And the reason for not including this in the amendment process has to do with those pillars four and five, mainly pillar five, treating everyone fairly. So there's new policy decisions or expanded programs that during the biennial build, that should be when that is presented. So it's weighed against all the other new programs and policies that are anticipated for the upcoming biennium. New FTE that are not required as part of the unanticipated receipts. So if we were to get grant revenues in that were associated with an FTE position, and you have the revenue to fund it, then that could be something that's included in the amendment. But if we don't have unanticipated receipts or revenues to cover that FTE, then that wouldn't be something that we would ask to fund during these amendment processes. The last one is the question for items that were considered in the 24-25 budget but were decided not to go forward with it. Bringing that back in the amendment process again speaks to clarify with not treating everyone fairly, and it was weighed against all the other options. It was decided not to move forward with that. If that is still a need from the department or office, it should be also put through at the next biennial build, not an amendment process.
And before we move on, I would just go back to the creating a fair process and then treating everyone fairly. Everyone should have an equal opportunity to request funding from the Board. And we do that through certain instructions and process and rules that you create. And when some players don't follow the rules, they may gain an advantage over people who don't. And you don't have an opportunity as a Board to weigh all of the priorities. And when you're only getting some things, and everything is a need, we are not saying that anything that people bring forward is not a need. But everything's a need, and everything's good. These are good and valuable things that people are asking for. But if you as a Board who have limited resources to distribute don't see everything together, then you can't possibly weigh it all and ensure that you're making the best use of the county's resources. So we encourage you to apply these rules as you go through this review.
Can I ask about the, you started with some RCWs, and then, you know, then, everything you just said, I understand, like, why you should do it this way. But is there, if we didn't do it this way, and we added new FTEs and stuff, did we?
Are we up to you?
Are we violating RCWs about the limit of a budget amendment in some way?
No, the Board has the ultimate authority to appropriate as you see fit. So you certainly could decide to fund new FTEs or brand-new programs at any point along the year. But what you're, that's not best practices in budgeting because, again, you know, there might be something that is not before you that would be a greater priority to the Board as a whole for your resources if you knew about it. But you didn't because the person working on that program is following the rules and didn't turn it in on time. But you absolutely can do those other things because appropriation is the, it's the prerogative of the Board.
The law doesn't limit the Board's ability to do X, Y, or Z in an amendment.
No, it does not.
Okay.
Or spend money throughout the year, right? That's the, is that, that's what I'm getting the difference from what you're saying is like, you could have people come throughout the year and give us money, give us money, give us money, but we want to set us, yeah, but we want to create a fair playing field. We want to set a time in the year when everyone gets their day in court at the same time, and that's how we ensure that it's done.
That's right. We have certain times throughout the year that we make sure that that happens.
And, and you're saying the best practice is to protect that process and not dole out throughout the year arbitrarily?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Edwards?
On page five, where it's budget amendments, budget amendments are limited to emergencies and technical corrections. So I'm just curious, we've had a citizen complaint here about an expenditure out of the Veterans Fund. Would that be a technical correction if, if that complaint was verified?
Yes. I'm going to say yes, it would. Had, had the Board chosen to do something, we'll talk about that particular item today. But had you, based on advice received from our attorneys, decided that something was an eligible use of a fund, and we discover later that it is not, or it cannot be set up in such a way that makes it eligible, then that would be a correction that we would encourage you to make at this time, or perhaps not a correction as much as a different decision.
All right. Okay, so we're going to move from the presentation and get right into the lines here. So I wanted to express that the packets before you are grouped in a way for the Budget Office to manage the multitude of requests that we get. So there are two main categories that we classify change requests, and the two main are maintenance or policy. So something maintenance level would be inflation, something that is normally within operational budget, and we need to just make a maintenance level or base level change to it, opposed to a policy level request, which would be something on the lines of a new program direction or new FTE or decision of that case. Yes, Commissioner?
Are we going to go over this revenue?
Yes, we are. I'd like to, if it's.
You skipped that page. I just wondered.
I surely did at this point because I'd like to go through the request, and then you can see the dollar amounts that are associated with the request, and then you go to the general fund forecast so that you can see those numbers applied to it. Thank you. Okay. So the first change request before you is technical and transfers, and that is underneath the maintenance level. And so the way that these packets run, you'll see the line numbers on the left-hand side. So the first one is one, two, and three. You'll see there. The next is the name of the change request. We use this for accounting in the Budget Office, the fund that is associated with the department, and then the revenues and expenses over the biennium. The title and the statement of need are to the right of the page. The budget team has grouped these in a way by color. So if there's a block of color, you'll see blue and white colors. Those two lines will go with one change request, so it's easier for you to follow along. And so I'll just keep going through each change request. Please just interrupt me if you have a question about it. If not, I'll just keep proceeding through each change request as we go along. Okay, so the first two lines here, this is a maintenance level request, and this is for an extension of the auditor's position with the clerk. So during the 2024-2025 biennium, there was reductions and our decisions that needed to be made. And at that point, it was determined that out of the Auditor's Maintenance and Operations Fund, that a position could not be covered and carried through in that fund. However, in the clerk's office.
Position in the clerk's office.
It's a position in the clerk's office that would be funded out of the Auditor's 1050. That's the Maintenance Operations Fund. And it has since been determined that there is enough capacity in that fund to support that position. It came before you in January to actually keep this position on the books. So this now is the authority to be able to pay for that position. Is that clear? Okay. So then the next two lines, or three lines there, three and line three here. This is also, this is considered technical because this has to do with GASBIE, so our General Accepted Accounting Principles. I mean, through GAAP and then also the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This is for lease transactions. The way that we are required to capture them, we have to pay for the entire lease upfront, and then it is expended over the year. So we're asking for the authority to go by that, those standards. So this is a $12,000 lease for a plotter, and then also the offsetting revenue. So this is an accounting need, not necessarily an increase in authority for them to purchase a plotter. This is a lease. So that's what you'll see in line three. You'll also see that in line four and also in line five.
We just have to book them because of the accounting.
Line six through 12, this has to do with Public Works and IT. We have an embedded position in Public Works for a GIS analyst. It was originally coded to the Public Works Funds, but it should be coded to Information Technology IT's fund and then built into the REITs. So this is a correction, a technical transfer or correction, where we are taking that funding out of the Public Works Funds and booking them in IT funds.
Any questions on those?
Well, yeah, yeah, I do have a question. So if we're going to the IT fund, is that the fund that we always do 60-40? I just used that as an explanation.
Roughly 60-40, yeah. It's one of those 60-40 funds.
Okay.
But the position actually needs to be budgeted out of that IT fund and then filled out.
So it's, it still gets 40% from our loans or whatever?
And if you were to add up all these numbers, they net to zero.
Okay.
And no impact on the general.
Okay, so then line 13 here is about the Noxious Weed Program. So a grant revenue was received for noxious weeds to align with the work plan. Public Works is asking that we take the funding out of 2025 and put it in 2024, and that is for lines 13 and 14. Line 15 and 16, this is also a technical correction. The budget authority for the Hopkins Greenestitch, this is a repair for the culvert. We need to include the operating lines. The budget authority is already in their public, in the Public Works budget. However, the operating lines to be able to fund out of the roads needs to be added. Again, very technical. The authority has already been awarded this year. This is just the transfer associated with the authority. Line 17 and 18, this is a correction. Any questions?
She's just going to keep going through them, and they'll interrupt her if they have a question.
Any questions, let me know. If I'm going too fast, you let me know.
You know, just for historical thing, I mean, the Hopkins thing is what we've been dealing with a couple of years.
Yep, this is all.
Finally got a solution.
Okay. All right, so then line 17 and 18, this is also a technical correction. So this is correcting the revenue out of the Tammy Shannon Rep Reserve Fund. If you, we did a consolidation of our utilities, and so the funding was booked in Tammy Shannon, but it should be booked in the Water Utility Reserves because we consolidated all of our utilities. And so this is just putting that funding in the correct, in the correct fund. So lines 19, 20, and 21 here, see if they go over to the next page. Nope, so just 19 through 21. This is a technical corrections to the LMDs. So during the budget process, it was determined that the LMDs would not be funded out of Public Works, but be funded out of Environmental Health, so out of the Public Health Department. We need to continue to fix that correction, to make that permanent. So these were expenses that were coded in Public Works section of our LMDs that need to be coded in Environmental Health. So what you see is a decrease out of Public Works so that that funding can be in Public Health. And then what you see in 2025 is that when that correction was put in, they overcorrected in Public Works, so we need to make it a net zero. So this is definitely a cleanup of lines, and that decision to put this funding in Environmental Health still stands. We're not changing their authority.
Just a quick question on that. On the Lake Management Districts, do we sweep those funds, or do we allow the interest to occur in those funds?
Uh, I'll have to look.
Second question, you have to look.
I'll, while you take a look and I will take one.
They're always looking for revenue, and revenue's up a little bit for interest investments, so.
So then the next line, line 22, this is for Treatment Sales Tax. In the 2023 budget, there was a funding for housing acquisition for a three-bedroom residential house to house individuals in court-needed dependency for a mental health treatment program. There was an attempt to purchase a property that did not go through, and so they'd like to be able to move this funding into 2024 to continue those efforts that were approved in 2023. Okay, lines 23 and 24, this is also for a Fiscal Account Assistant inside of Public Health. There was funding coded to 1,400. That should be in 1,500. So those are the fund numbers. So originally coded in Housing and Community Renewal, but it needs to be in the Public Health and Social Services Fund. It's a correction that Public Health noticed that was just in the wrong fund, based on the activities of that position. So that is the last line in technical and transfers. If there aren't any questions, we'll go over to the next packet. Good. So then the next one is labeled just maintenance. And this one should be fairly quickly because there are three pages. However, there are only two change requests on here. So you'll see lines one through 43 are associated with the credit card rebates. So there is expense authority for credit card use. So in 2023, the revenues are recorded for every department and offices that uses their credit card. They get their revenues in 2023, and then this is asking for in 2024 for that authority to spend that rebate that they got from doing well using credit cards. This is something that we do annually. This is just giving them the ability to spend that rebate.
It's in the seventh program.
Yep, so this is everybody's department. I have numbers here. So the general fund got about $30,000 in rebates, and the non-general fund around $70,000. So in essence, free money. All right, so line four.
Our Costco rewards.
Exactly.
Yep. And the more they use the credit card, the greater the rebate to the county. So I really want them to do that.
And so then the last change request in this maintenance level packet is line 44. And this has to do with the Sheriff's Office for certified assets. So through the Narcotics Task Force, there are fortitudes, and that revenue is deposited within this inter-local drug enforcement fund. They have three years to spend that. And so they're asking to spend those, that revenue that was generated from that in 2024, about $25,000. So that's the actual revenue that they recorded, along with some interest.
Spend on what?
To spend it on what? I'm sorry.
It has to be spent on.
They haven't listed exactly what they're going to purchase with it. It would be with the Narcotics Task Force, with the Sheriff's Office. We can ask them what they're intending to spend that, that on?
They, they have an FTE that's charged to that fund. They charge equipment to that fund. But since the revenue can only be used for those purposes, that's where we put it. Back to the interest question on the.
Can I ask a question?
All right, Commissioner.
I just wanted to ask a question in regards to that fund because this was one of the funds that, I think it was around 2026, we saw it go in the red. And so I, I'm wondering, you know, what is, like, will this help? Like, what is? Or are we just giving them more authority to spend? What is the actual request?
So this request is for the revenues that are already in the fund. They're asking the authority to spend them. I can follow up on the financial plan and look into it, I believe you said, going into the red in 2026, and see what's, you know, more clear.
Yeah. I, I think it was 2026, but it was some, I remember this is one of the, the Narcotics Task Force Fund was one of the funds that went into the red in the future that I had on my list to keep a track of. So I just want to make sure that. we're not overextending ourselves.
That fund never has a secure funding source that we can depend on. It always varies, so there's no way to calculate that income into that fund.
Yes, Commissioners, we'll look into that.
Yeah, and, um, the Heidi and the Sheriff kind of explained that and they were kind of awaiting it. But I think it's just better to prepare ourselves, right? Than get surprised if it's going to be something that is gonna come later on that, you know, if it's in the red. So I just wanna be sure.
Interest in the Lake Management Funds is retained by the fund.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we're ready to move over to the next packet, it's labeled Carry Forward. This is also underneath that Maintenance Level. The first two lines here is a request from the Auditor. In 2023, she had $375,000 available inside of her capital outlays in the Auditor's Election Reserve Fund. She's asking to move that into 2024.
How many dollars are you talking about?
So a total of, it says 475 there.
Yeah.
And it's because there is a transfer that is moving $100,000 into Central Services Fund. And that is to help with the Mottman Complex. So there is actually a total of $375,000 that was left inside of the Auditor's Reserve Fund in 2023, that she'd like to move into 2024. She would like to take $100,000 of that and apply it to the Mottman Complex for a fence for the generator, around the generator and propane tank, and also improvements to the mailroom. So when there is a transfer, it's a technical thing. You will see that amount doubled on what that transfer amount is, because it's considered an expense, but it's not an increase in authority. It is a technical way of taking money out of a savings account and putting it, say, in the operational fund.
So just as a process clarification, this money was in this fund last year specifically to be used for the Mottman Project. And we were not that far along in the Mottman Project and we're not able to spend the money last year. Appropriation authority lapses at the end of a year. So for them to be able to spend it this year, you have to grant them appropriation authority. This isn't new money. They didn't spend it last year. It's still in the fund balance. None of this is General Fund. So the money is sitting there waiting to be spent. But just because it's in the fund doesn't mean they can spend it. They absolutely need appropriation authority to be able to spend. That's what this is.
It wasn't, was that part of that additional funding source to accomplish the remodel?
Yes. And it was grant funds that we received from the state and the feds.
Thank you.
And so this entire packet is that way, where there was authority in 2023. It lapses at the end of the year. They're asking if they can have the authority to spend it in 2024. So then, um, line three here is from inside the Historic Preservation Fund. So these are three grant awards that we gave for the RAC, for the Brewery Falls Park, and for its annual, um, walking tour that we still would like to be able to expend in 2024. So we're asking to move that grant funding into 2024, so we can continue to pay that out to them.
Do we know if the Brewery Falls Park project is moving anywhere?
I don't know what that is doing, but we can certainly follow up on that. It's, it's, um, disheartening that it's been on the books so long and it hasn't gone anywhere.
And so line four is inside the ARPA Fund, 1940. And that is for $500,000. Again, this is unspent appropriation that happened in 2023. They'd like to move it into 2024 to continue with the projects that you guys have already put forward to move, to move going forward. So $500,000 into 2024. Line five and six go together. This is for the Equipment Rental and Reserves Fund. This is for equipment that was intended to be purchased in 2023 that have not come through. So they'd like to be able to move the authority into 2024 to continue those, procuring those assets.
And again, on a process clarification, the accounting rules say that you cannot pay for something if you have not received it. So we had ordered this equipment and it's gotta be received by the end of the fiscal year, which is December 31st. We're having trouble getting cars in particular, but other equipment too has been delayed. So it didn't come in on time. So we need the appropriation authority to pay for it when it does come in this year.
So that's the $4 million?
Yep, that's that. And again, not spent last year, sitting in the fund, appropriated for this year.
So line seven here is for the Solid Ways Division Rate Study. So that rate study is underway. They're asking to continue that rate study. And so they need to move authority from 2023 into 2024 in the amount of $30,000. Line eight is the Stormwater Utility Comprehensive Study. So that study is underway as well. And there's $105,000 that they need to move from 2023 into 2024 to continue that study as well. Line nine and 10 go together. And this is for the Water and Sewer Utilities Billing Software. So this was approved in 2023. With all of the IT projects that are currently going on in the county, they're asking to move that authority into 2025 with hopes of working with the IT Department to determine when would be the best time to be able to work on that software. Uh, line 11 here is for the Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Project. This is a grant funding of $500,000 along with the expenses that they're asking to move from 2023.
Is this, let me ask a question on this, on, uh, Public Works on the Sewer Utility Reserve. Is that $900 difference in there just, uh, for, it's two different items? Or that's on line nine and 10?
Two different funds.
It's two different funds, so it's a split.
It just happens to be close to that, okay.
So, um, also is for pre-designed studies that are funded within the Roads and Construction Fund. They're asking to move from 2023 to 24 to continue those studies. It's outlined for different projects that they're working on with that study and how that expenditure authority is separated between, between the four projects there. In line 13, this is also for the Roads Royal Community Support Program. So it's RCSP. This is funding carryover as, as well, um, from 2023 into 2024. This is about the TRPC, um, uh, agreement that we have to be able to expend projects. So, um, there, we have federal dollars that certain cities, uh, small cities cannot use. So we have an agreement with them to be able to, um, give them revenue in, in, in exchange for, um, uh, how, I'm sorry. So the RCSP is a program that Thurston County supports. It exchanges federal capital dollars for small cities and tribes that they can't use federal funding. And in doing that, we also meet with the federal, um, resources for the Highway Administration Program. So from what I understand, the way that this program works is that we receive funding, um, from the TRPC. We are able to award that to small cities and counties so that they are small cities, so that they can be able to do projects. In exchange, um, there is an agreement between the two. And to continue, to continue to do that, we need to move funding from 2023 to 2024 to be able to continue those projects.
Could you give us an example of that?
Sure, so I'm looking at the examples here. I don't know specifically what projects that they're using. I could follow up on you, follow up on that.
Oh, let's see.
Is this the chipsy or?
No, it's not.
Do a little section in town?
Road projects. It's, um, the little projects that gets funded with this money is, uh, like, one year I remember the Boys and Girls Club needed a parking lot. Well, they can't meet all the federal rules that go along with the federal award that TRPC gets. So the county gets the TRPC money. We use it to free up other local money that can be used for that kind of project. And then we award the project to the little
That's a Ponzi scheme.
Love it.
It's, it's, you know, with all, I'm, I'm gonna say this and not mean it, but it, the first time they tried to explain this to me, it felt like money laundering.
Yes.
And it was like, what are you doing? But when, when you get down into the weeds and examine exactly what's being done, it's all very legal and
And 7% of that is our
It is an important function and it supports our community and funds small projects that otherwise could not be done.
The same thing has been happening on the state level.
Right.
You receive dollars from the feds and then they become state dollars that alleviate some of the concerns for smaller jurisdictions. You don't have the capacity to fill all the markets.
Right.
I'm gonna explain it for me, to me, one more time, how it flows.
TRPC directly receives large federal, uh, transportation type funding. These little community projects can't use federal funds. You know, you can't meet all the requirements. So TRPC awards the funds to Thurston County. We then use the federal money, because we use all kinds of federal money, on projects that qualify for the federal money. That frees up local money that we would have used on those projects that is eligible to use for small community projects.
So we're changing the color of the money. Money comes in, federal money, it's colored that.
I, I think there's some water and some dye and I could go get that out and I could do a little science experiment.
But we're not commingling in any way. Um, we, we are using the appropriate types of funds on the appropriate projects.
And we get 7% for administering.
We do retain 7% for administration.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Well, I think it would help next time, instead of line items, if you bring different bottles with different colors. That would help me understand better. Thank you.
You don't even know what to do with that, do you?
Just keep going.
It's like, just let me do my job here.
As well, so I'm, I'm definitely
If you had used colored marbles, though, we could separate it back out if we had to.
All right, line 14.
Okay, so guys, line 14, something a little less complicated, right? So, um, the Roads Traffic Calming Program was awarded, uh, funding in 2023. They're asking to carry forward $60,000. This is in the Roads and Transportation Fund to continue with their professional services for traffic calming. And so line 15, again, this packet is all about carryforward. So it's awards that were approved in 2023 that they're asking to move forward to continue those efforts. So this is for Thurston County Safety Action Plan. That also is within the Roads Fund, so an amount of $263,000 about funding that was awarded in 2023. So the revenues, and they're asking to put those revenues in 2024. Line 16, and this is for the Roads Development Review. This is for the Cost of Services Study. So they're asking to continue that study in the amount of $30,000, $31,000 there from 2023 into 2024. Line 17 and 18, this is for the Permit Tracking System. There has been a few delays and so they're asking to move that expense authority in 2023 to 2024 in the amount of $376,000 to continue that project. Okay? And then when we get through lines one through seven, I'd like to group these. These, um, as you note in the change request title, they start with CR. So in our capital budget process, um, and also in the CIP process, we currently, um, approve the entire capital project budget at the time of the capital budget is created. So if you are given a capital project before you, you know what that entire, entire capital project budget will be by fund and you approve it at that time. However, during the process of doing capital projects, there may be delays or there may be, um, projects that can move forward before others. And so the department has the ability to move that funding forward or backward to be able to account for that schedule of the project. These lines before you are the operating or transfer lines that are associated with that authority that has already been approved. So lines one through seven is a technical carryforward for a capital project's budget that was already approved. So lines one through three are for the Parks and Trails Capital Projects. It says reappropriations because that project's budget has already been approved. However, we need to align the operating transfers with that. Lines four and five are for the Road Transportation Projects.
Let me ask you a question on that. On line three, Real Estate Excise Tax, second quarter, is it Real Estate Excise Tax one or two?
Two.
Two.
Second quarter is two.
Okay. So it's REIT two fund?
Yep.
So again, this, um, funding has already been approved and is already, um, built in the financial plan to continue with this project, um, at that amount inside of REIT two. This is the transfer lines to associate so that you can continue to do that project. During the CIP process that will be brought for you for the next six years, you'll have the ability to look at all of the capital projects within a particular fund and decide which projects and how to align the budget going forward. These are projects that are already underway, that you have currently already approved, that need this, uh, technical correction to be able to align that appropriation with what has already been approved in that funding plan during that six-year window. Okay. And then that's also for line six and seven. This is Water and Sewer Utility Productions. Okay? There aren't any questions?
Yeah, I, I do have a question.
Yes.
On, uh, going back to page four out of five, in line five, we're talking about 4, 2 million. Is that in REIT two as well?
Yes. The Real Estate Excise Tax Second Quarter is the formal name for REIT two.
Okay. Got it. Even though it's in the first quarter or whatever.
No.
I mean
So quarter refers to quarter of a percent.
Okay, not first quarter.
REIT one is the first quarter. Quarter of a percent goes to that fund. And then when we charge the second .25%, that goes to REIT two. That's the second quarter percentage against the price of the recording. Real estate transaction.
Good question, thank you. I didn't know something every time.
Okay. So now we're gonna jump into policy level requests. And these are grants. And so what I'd like to note here is that there is associated revenue and expenses for each one of these grant requests. So these are unanticipated receipts. These are either increases in grants that were billed in the 24-25 budget. They hadn't been awarded yet. The department did their best to anticipate what that revenue would be in and it came in higher than they had anticipated. So now they're asking for that revenue to be recorded and the expenses to match. Or is another grant that was not included in the 24-25 biannual bill that they're asking for the revenues and the expenses to match. So I can go through each one of these lines, um, to show that. But the first lines, one through three here, this is, um, grant funding from the Auditor. In the Haba Grant, this is the Help America to Vote Act Election Security Grant. There was $4,000 left over in interest that was recorded in the General Fund. So they're asking to take that interest out of the General Fund, put it in the Auditor's Election Reserve Fund where it should live, and then take that and give it to Central Services so it can assist with the security improvements project, so Mottman. Lines four and five are for the Voter Registration Center. So this is also the JAG Grant for Ballistic Doors. Two ballistic doors are, um, going to be put in at the Election Security Building. And so that is an amount of $25,000, $25,600. So this is the revenue and expenses to match that. Line six and seven, this is also a, a grant awarded in the amount of $25,000. This is to add handrails at the Voter Registration Center along the walking trail. So the revenue and expenses match.
And by the way, you just proved this on your agenda yesterday.
Line eight, also you'll see the Superior Court is asking for 30, about $31,000 in revenue and expenses. This is because they received, um, a grant for lactation privacy pods at the Family and Juvenile Court Building. And so they're asking to record the revenue and the expenses to match to receive that grant. Lines nine at the Superior Court, this is for Safe Babies Grant. They received $25,000 in revenue. They're asking to book the expenses to match. Lines, um, 10 here, this is for, um, the Lines, um, ten here, this is for, um, the Washington Association of Prosecutors Attorneys. They received a grant awarded in the amount of nine thousand dollars about, they're asking to record the revenue. Line eleven, this is for the Stop Grant, so the Violence Against Women's Grant. And this is an increase, so they did have it in twenty-four, twenty-five biennium, but an additional like a thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. They're asking to record that revenue and the expenses to match.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so if this is grant money, how come it falls under Public Safety Sales Tax?
So that's the fund that we will put the grant revenue in so that they can spend it. Um, yeah, we could put it in the general fund or we could put it in this fund. It's there, the other expenses that they're planning on, um, paying for. So we'll record the grant revenue in one fund and that grant revenue stays in there. It adds to the ability to pay out.
It can't be used in any other way.
Okay.
It, it's not flexible money. And we're trying to whittle the general fund now down to where it's truly money that you have authority to use broadly. So since this money can only be used for this thing and we're shifting to where we're funding these three offices out of these two funds, it makes sense to put their grant awards in there as well.
Okay.
So that, does that same thing apply like on that hundred and twenty-three thousand as well? So won't that show though that we're doing more? How will we keep track that we're putting, was it, is it twenty-five percent or a portion of twenty-five percent that goes to them is gonna add up wrong and then if we add other stuff to it, won't it?
Nope. It, it's got its own revenue line, so we'll be able to easily identify the funds that go in from the tax.
Why do they have, I mean, if they got the grant for something, why would they need to spend it on that something?
They are going to spend on that something.
But there's no expenditure authority given, just grant, just revenue book.
Which line are you talking about?
I'm talking about line ten.
So they already have the expenses built in their budget. So it was approved on the twenty-four, twenty-five and now they have grant revenue to cover some of those expenses that were approved.
So this is a case where they asked the board, the budget process, to spend the money. And they're off getting grants and this grant can be used to offset. Cover those expenses, so that's why we're coming back to do that.
That's correct, yep.
Good.
Yeah, that's good, that's a, that's a win.
And so within the account, you have things, line items, so that it's clear as to what money's coming in, what money's going out.
That is correct, so, um, not to get too far into accounting, but there are ways to code programs that says that this money is coming from a specific place. Also, there are, um, object codes that say if this is a sales tax money, there is a specific number in that object code that identifies that this is sales tax revenue. There's a specific object code that says this is a grant revenue. So when we look at it from the accounting and look at the details, we can tell you how much grant revenue came from what specific activity. We can run reports, so whoever wanted to see them, we can share that.
The same on line twelve.
It's not just like one big bucket where you put everything in.
No.
We can definitely see the details. So we're at line twelve. Yep, so this is for the Target Zero Grant, they're asking for revenue in twenty-four and twenty-five. And again, that, as Robin is alluding to, that this is saying that there is already expenses booked in that fund and that they have this revenue to offset those expenses now. Uh, line thirteen is, um, also for a grant. This is updating, um, the increase in grant award for nineteen thousand dollars and then they're asking to increase their expenditure authority by seven thousand. And we have matching revenue and expenses here in line fourteen in the Sheriff's, um, Sheriff's Fund or Sheriff's Department, um, also for Stop in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred. The next line is in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred. So this is grant awards and they're asking to also increase their expenditures with the revenue. So it's a net zero impact, the writing's coming in. This is, uh, line sixteen, is for the Traffic Safety Commission Grant in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Line seventeen, this is revenue that was received in twenty twenty-two that they're asking to continue to spend. This is on the Mary P, um, Health.
Halloran, this is the Halloran Grant. This is the purchase of the dog that you've been talking to the sheriff about, that you've approved.
Just authored.
Yep, so this is the expense authority, they have the money already. And line eighteen, um, this is also in the interf, in our local drug, um, enforcement fund. This is for grant revenue of forty-five thousand with offsetting, um, expenditures and we will bring back that financial plan for you. And that's line eighteen and nineteen.
Commissioner.
Uh, my question, can I wait just till the end of the grants because it applies to all of them?
So then the corner there, line twenty, is also asking for grant revenue and expenses that are matching. And lines twenty-one and twenty-two, this is for the Electric Vehicle Station Grants, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is asked, um, in revenue and then also an offsetting expense authority. The theme here is that the revenue, it matches the expenses, if not, um, there's more revenue than it matches. So line twenty-three for, uh, Public Defense, this is also, um, grant in the amount of seven, five thousand dollars. Line twenty-four is for the, um, Homeland Security Grant in the amount of thirty-eight thousand in twenty-four and in twenty-five. This is, uh, line twenty-five is in Public Works for the Community Litter, um, Cleanup Program. This is grant revenue in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred in twenty twenty-four and fifty-four hundred. The expense authority is already in their budget, so this is grant award to cover that. Uh, line twenty-six is for the amount of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-six, also a grant from Ecology. So line twenty-seven and twenty-eight is for Noxious Weed Grant through Public Works in the amount of forty thousand dollars. And during the change from Public Works to Public Health, this grant award, um, was thought to be able to be placed in the Public Health Department. It cannot, it needs to stay with Public Works because of how the, the grant was awarded. However, it does not change the ability to, um, fund any activities with the Lake Management District. It will continue to happen, however, the grant has to stay with the Public Works Department, but will still be used for the same activities. Yes. It's the way that the grant was awarded to the Public Works Department, the way that that award was found and checked later.
Okay.
Yep, keep going. All right, line twenty-nine. This is for Noxious Weed Grant Award in the amount of thirty-one hundred dollars for Public Works. They're also, that was from the Department of Agriculture. Line thirty, um, another grant for Stormwater Department for Ecology in the amount of one hundred and ten in revenue. Twenty-four. And this is, um, the Community Planning, where they're also recognizing a forty thousand dollar grant for the Shoreland Master Plan Outreach, um, Kit. You can see that the revenue and expenses are matching. And so that's forty thousand dollars, um, for the Shoreland Master Plan, twenty-five thousand dollars for the Stream of Flow Restoration and then a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, um, in additional grant money.
Before you change pages there, uh, going back to twenty-seven and twenty-eight, any chance that that money could be used to solve that pontoon boat situation?
So this money has already been awarded for, and I'm gonna mess up the name, but the Long Lake Brazilian Elda, Elder? How do you say that?
That's weed, weed control and that's what, that's what they use the pontoon boat for.
It's got to be used for the eradication of weed.
That's what, that pontoon boat is used for.
So I'm not sure what the, but you, do you know what he's talking about, about the pontoon boat?
The pontoon boat, uh, actually, there is no problem anymore. If the, that was surplus, actually it was sold at auction.
Oh, yeah.
And did somebody get it from the lake?
Someone bought it, yes.
From the lake program?
I don't, don't know.
You don't know who bought it?
For sure, I have to.
It went to auction as required by.
Yeah.
So I'll have to, I'll have to double check. I think I have the name of the person, but I don't know if they're associated with it.
Person, I'm just wondering if that would solve their need. You know, because we have to spend it and it's from Ecology and it's going to that program.
And I believe it needs to be spent on treatment of the weeds.
Well, that's, you're giving treatment there by riding around in that pontoon boat.
I need boat is not paying for treatment.
So that's how you do it. So I hope we didn't miss something there, good enough, we'll, we'll find out a little more about it, thank you.
Still have more grants, right?
Yeah. Okay, so next page. So yeah, line thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six are also for Community Planning. Um, and so these are grants with offsetting revenues and expenses that are matching. First ones for the Conservation Program, phase four extension. The next is for the Habitat Strategic Initiative Lead Grant and the other, um, is for the Historic Registration Storing Site Records Grant. So these are all grant revenues that are coming into Community Planning and they're asking for the revenue and expenses in twenty-four and twenty-five. All right, so then line seventeen is also for grant award through Public Health and this is for the LEAD Program in three hundred and sixty thousand and twenty-four and two hundred and forty thousand and twenty-five.
Where does that come from? I mean, the, I know where it comes from, where does the number come from? Like, why is it going down or is it a formula of some kind or they're weeding us down year by year? Or why does that drop by twenty-five percent? Thirty-three percent.
What was awarded in their grant contract, I'd have to see why that's changed.
That is true. I think that the fact that we're continuing to receive lead funding from the state at all.
No, I know.
Is wins, so.
I'm just trying to understand where's it going. Like why, you know, what's the, because yeah, we, at one point, we didn't expect to have funding this far out, but.
Right.
I'm just trying to figure out where it's headed with that production.
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Commissioner, you had grant questions?
I did, um, I guess my question is, uh, with any of these grants that we've seen, is there an expectation of, is there gonna be any matching funds that we have to give? Has that been already accounted for?
So during our grant process that, um, Robin is a part of, that is included on our grant application. And where it's submitted between the board that looks at what those requirements are, if that grant has a matching requirement and if that can be met with authority that is already in their budget or not. Um, I believe part of the award of the grant is that process. If it doesn't have match authority outside and they would need to ask for more authority, that is something that's going on the application at that time. Um, there is.
By the board approving this and then we find out that there's more money needed later? Because that's all been taken into consideration at this point?
That is supposed to be how this works. They're not supposed to accept grants that require match if they don't have the match already.
All right, so then the bottom line on the grants is that the revenue exceeds the expenses?
This is, um, a little unusual to have this many grant awards, um, so soon after you adopted the original budget, but it does speak to how successful our, uh, offices and departments are in looking for grants at this time, so it's pretty impressive.
So then the next packet is also about Lake. So the Blake decision was, um, extended through June of twenty twenty-five, is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes.
I just think of what the calendar was.
So Blake, Blake REIT, um, being able to submit for expenses associated with Blake cases has extended through June twenty twenty-five. And so these requests on, in this packet is extending those expenses and then having offsetting revenue to associate with that. So we'll be able to reimburse for those activities through June twenty twenty-five. And so lines one, um, and two are for the clerk, um, to be able to increase expenditure authority for forty-five thousand dollars and then also be able to reimburse and get that revenue back in. So it will be a net, a net zero impact. Line three and four is for Superior Court to be able to extend those positions to work on four activities, to work on Lake in the amount of fifty-one thousand, with being able to submit reimbursement of the same amount. Um, the only difference on, the only thing different on this packet is line five and six and where District Court is actually giving back that authority in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred. Um, they're saying that they will not have activity that is Blake-related and they want to give it back.
Was it, who's District Court?
District Court. And then line seven and eight are associated with the prosecuting attorney. And that is the amount of a hundred and about sixty thousand dollars in which they're asking to extend those positions and that activity and to seek reimbursement because that, um, reimbursement for Blake has been extended. So everything in this packet has an offsetting revenue. So they will not bill for, once they bill for expenses, there will be revenue associated up to these dollar amounts.
How come, go ahead. How come it goes from departmental to prosecuting attorney or district court to, uh, non-departmental?
We bill the, uh, office of the administrator of the courts in one block and the revenue's booked in non-departmental. But it's spent in the departments, but it's all related to Blake. The county is reimbursed for its costs.
Right, so operational, the expenses occur within those departments and then Jennifer coordinates with all of those departments to find out what expenses need to be reimbursed and she submits for reimbursement and that revenue gets reported in non-departmental.
So it's not technically a grant, but it's kind of like a grant. I mean, we're not, we don't have discretionary decisions we need to worry about.
That's right. A hundred percent on a wage from a basis.
So then the next packet is public, it's policy level label of Public Safety Sales Tax. This is in association with the Public Safety Sales Tax, the M O E that was stated in the proviso. We work with the prosecuting attorney, the sheriff's office and public defense to move their entire expense authority that's in the general fund into the Public Safety Sales Tax Funds that are associated with their department. And then also to transfer the revenue from the general fund into those respective, um, funds associated with the proviso. So that is the lines here for you. The total amount of revenue that will go through is forty thousand or forty million, excuse me.
So that's an estimate?
No, that is exactly what would be transferred over every year in association with the M O E. We have the ability to increase that if you'd like, but this is just based on the proviso. So this is moving their expense authority that was in general fund that was approved into the respective fund and then aligning the revenue transfer with that proviso into those funds.
Is that that fund, we can't drop below that amount?
Mm-hmm, right.
That's correct. Um, and the only reason this was not done in the original budget last fall is by the time we knew that the tax had passed, um, it was too late to have these ladies, uh, mucking around like this and to set up all the appropriate codes. So the board gave direction in the budget for us to do this in the First Amendment, so here it is.
So this is not, nothing is, this isn't the things we're gonna spend the money on. This is just setting up the financial structure.
Technical structure. This is not allowing more appropriation authority or less. It, it just sets up the transfer, so it's totally technical.
Have we addressed the community members' concerns who mentioned several times that we aren't allowed to do this? Please check with legal and make sure that we can transfer the money.
We are confident that, yes, we can do this.
Okay. So then, if there aren't any other questions?
Yeah, I, I, I do have a, maybe not on that, but I do wanna, I wanna go back to that, uh, grant from Ecology.
Okay, is that on there?
On, uh, five, or four of five on, uh, grants. And I'm just trying to figure out, so there's twenty-nine thousand, three seventy-five, it looks like. Was that, uh, twenty-seven and twenty-eight?
So this, if you look at line four, wait, which one are you looking at?
I'm on, which four, five, line twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Noxious Weeds Long Lake Management District.
Oh, that one, okay.
Twenty, twenty-eight, looks like it's twenty-nine thousand, three seventy-five, but it's thirty-nine thousand, three seventy-five, uh, on twenty-seven.
Yes, it doesn't add up.
Yeah, so what's that about?
Because there's already, so, there's already funding. Because there's already, so, there's already funding within the fund. This is a biennial grant award, meaning it was over a two-year span. This is the change, so you don't see the, the total amount that's awarded. You see just the net change. So we have some authority that was in Long Lake, some that was in Noxious Weeds, and this is adjusting that.
And this came out coincidentally to even ten thousand?
Yeah, so they're, they already reported the ten in the long fund, and so they're taking it out and putting it in together. So we collapsed all the lines together, you get that total amount.
It's grant-related, but it really is a technical change.
Okay. Thank you. I, I'm going to probably bug you a little more.
Yeah, so, we're not taking too much away from the lake, but we're adding everything they need to Noxious Weeds, and it's all on the list.
But I still don't know, as we solve the pontoon boat problem.
That is a completely different question than we can address.
I don't want a pontoon boat presentation. Immediately, I know nothing about this pontoon boat.
I don't know if we want to go that far.
He sold the pontoon boat, there is still pontoon.
Yeah, it's gone.
Yeah, it's gone. Alright.
So we're on policy level T S T. So these are two requests for treatment sales tax. The first one is the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand four hundred dollars. And this is for a request for the Monarch Health Therapy Program. They're asking for one F T E for a mental health therapist, and an F T E for a clinical supervisor, in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And during the budget process, we went through all of the committee's recommendations for T S T. We looked at that financial plan in depth to figure out what, what we would fund, and what was improved in that funding. So this is outside of the biennial for this request. We did reach out to public health to try and get a list of their priorities overall, see where this one fell in, in line with that. I think Jennifer, you have something to share?
And are these items that the board said no to in the budget process?
This is a little bit different. So this one was, uh, this one was recommended to be fully funded by the Treatment of Sales Tax Advisory Committee in that process. During the community grants process, the, the suggestion, recommendation was made to pull it out of the community grants, and fully fund it as a long-term program with Monarch, similar to what we do with Heart Strides.
But the time for that, the time to consider when to fund this program is in the general budget this fall. Because again, here, here we have a fund that we believe you fully committed. You overcommit in that fund, because the reversions are so high. And now we've got another hundred and seventy thousand in requests for things that should have been addressed
A hundred and seventy, or two seventy?
Well, two hundred and seventy for the Monarch, and a hundred thousand for Lead, without considering any other, the multitude of requests that you received, and didn't fund in the biennial bill. So, my recommendation to you is to follow the process, and say no to these at this time. Not, not no forever, but no, not now. Now is not the time.
Because of that fairness issue? Because you said, we could, if we decide it's a priority, we can make that change?
You absolutely can, should you choose to do so.
Well, that, that...
I am making a recommendation.
That law enforcement assistant...
And you're not making any decisions today, so that's just something to think about.
This is what we requested in the community grant?
Remember where we did the shift from Monarch to Interfaith? And then we had said...
But you can't just turn around and make a budget request for what?
We had said, hey, Monarch, you know, try to find a place in the ongoing budget to fund this, and not in the grant request process, I think, right?
The budget process was over.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm on the opposite side of Robin. I mean, the impact that Monarch has had, because we took that funding away, has been absolutely incredible. The backlog just keeps getting bigger, and, I mean, we heard them when they came and talked about the statistics that they were saying for child abuse prevention. I mean, for me, this is an emergency request. That's what I see this under. I mean, us taking that funding away is just affecting, really, the, you know, just, it's affecting our community, and it's affecting our statistics, and I, I'm really going to be, be pushing for this one.
I don't think it's fair to call it taking funding away. When they applied under the community grant request, that program is supposed to seed new programs. So it wasn't, didn't even really fit what the kind of request was, and then we decided to make a different decision. That's not taking funding away, per se.
It kind of was, because, you know, they had already been given the heads-up that, yes, you were going to receive funding, and then the board decided, right towards the end, to take that funding away. And, you know, shift it. And so, in a way, it was taking funding away. They had already prepared for this, and, and then we decided something different right towards the end.
I don't recall denying that, uh, the Lead Program funded.
Yeah, that, I want to talk about that.
Right now, we're, yeah, we'll get to Lead in a minute, but...
Just talking about the Monarch mental...
And again, no decisions today.
But, I mean, it's kind of tied in with one thing here. I realize what Commissioner Meheya is talking about, I remember that. But I don't remember anything about denying the Lead Program as a request. And so we're talking about this whole fairness thing you brought up. That we can do it if we want to do it, all that kind of stuff.
You can if you want, but we encourage you to follow the process.
But those two don't seem to fit together in the same process. I'm trying to figure out how...
They've got different reasons for coming before you.
With regard to fairness and process, isn't right now the opportunity?
No, not everybody, no, not, not to ask for new things, because not everybody is invited to apply with all the things they need.
Okay, and so for some people, this is new funding requests, and some people are making the argument, this is just to make them whole with what they didn't receive, and
In the budget.
Find the money outside of treatment sales tax, and so they're like, okay, I'll go here.
Or, you know, find more money in treatment sales tax. By the way, do we have a financial plan for this fund?
We do, but...
We can bring that to you when the time comes for the decision.
Okay, because as you mentioned, during the biennial, we maxed out the fund, if you remember. We maxed everything out, and we had to build in a reversion line, saying this historically is what is reverted, and we approved the funding, or you approved funding, with the understanding that this reversion would have to happen. So if we build this in, we have to look at that all over again and see what it looks like.
And, and acknowledging that the sales tax is so flat, and this is based on the sales tax revenue?
Do you recall what the, what the request was during the treatment sales tax discussion that they had made that was not funded?
The request was, um, there, there's a pot of money that the board authorizes specifically for community programs. They are intended to be one-time, one-time, not ongoing. So, Monarch has come in for a number of years, and received this community grant. This year, the board reduced the amount available for the community grants from significantly...
From eight hundred to five hundred thousand.
From eight hundred to five hundred thousand.
After it had been increased from two fifty just a few years ago.
Exactly, yeah, they started out at a hundred thousand a number of years ago, and just grew.
One hundred, two fifty.
Because there's so much money in the fund, and now there's not.
Yeah.
Um, so, the total amount available for community grants went down, and the board was making decisions about which ones to authorize within the five hundred thousand, and Monarch was not one of the ones that were chosen.
I'm, I'm just asking, there's specific requests that wasn't funded this year, what was that? Do you remember?
That, that was not quite what you're looking at here? Because part of the discussion at the time was that Heart Strides. So, part of the discussion is the fact that Monarch's come in year after year for a grant that's intended to be seed money to get new programs going, and supposed to be one-time. But Monarch has received it many times.
I remember that discussion.
Okay, so, part of the discussion was comparing it to another program that we had, that had received multiple community grant awards. It was coming in time after time, and the direction was given that at Heart Strides, if Heart Strides was going to be an ongoing thing, that they needed to find a way to get ongoing funding, and go through a different path. And that perhaps if Monarch really, if their real need wasn't these one-offs, but if the real need is ongoing funding, then they should take a different path. Well, they're taking it now, when the opportunity is really in the budget bill, later in the year.
Although the Treatment Sales Tax Committee recommended this one
They did.
over the other, right?
That was when they thought they had a lot more money.
Okay, and then, I got to go back to this Lead thing, I, I don't understand.
The Lead thing's a whole different, it's a whole different conversation for Lead.
Okay, so we're going to have that?
Wait, wait.
Yes.
Wait till we finish this. Got to be patient.
Are we through with the Monarch, then?
Well, I don't think we're through with the Monarch.
Well, no, you're going to have to eventually make a decision about that, when we ask for decisions. Tell us about Lead.
Yep, so Lead is asking for an additional hundred thousand dollars through the public health? Do you have any more?
Yeah, this is to cover funding that we're not getting from healthcare authorities. So the healthcare authority funding covers twenty-one months instead of twenty-four months, so this is to make that whole for the two years.
There's only twelve months in a year, why is their funding in year one? Not to put you on the spot, but...
I don't know why they put the funding in year one and not split over two years, because the, um, the HCA grant is split over two years, so I can follow up with that.
We've got all kinds of foundational funding grants. I don't know, what are we, on number twelve or fourteen, or?
I think if this is, if this explains why the grant, the Lead Grant, is higher in year one than year two, then we need to wait on this one, and see what is, actually comes through in the second year.
Okay.
But isn't this kind of leading to a lower jail population through intervention?
Lead is an excellent program.
That was the whole...
Right.
...reason for it.
But they don't need the year one money.
So, can't we talk about both of these topics, when we talk about both the Monarch and the Lead?
Yes, we absolutely can.
Okay. So I take it, more to come.
So before we go on, could I request a short break?
Yes, ma'am. Ten twenty-two, take ten.
All right, 10:33 AM, back from break, and we're picking back up with our budget review.
Thank you.
Our view, Nicole.
So we are picking back up with policy level personnel. We just have two more packets to go through this morning. This is again, just the first review of commitments. The first item on the policy personnel packet here is for the assessor's office during the 2024, 2025 biennium. There were general fund cuts to accommodate or trying to find alternative ways of addressing those cuts. This position was presented as if, um, if there were any processing of veteran exceptions that we could use veterans' funds to pay for some of that position, about 25% of that position. The assessor has asked that this fund or this position be funded 100% through general fund. We have been internally going through a process to get some understanding as to how this position can be funded if veterans' funding is an appropriate funding source. We've worked with our internal auditor, also with SAO to get a response. We reached out to SAO to get a response, and their response is that.
SAO.
State, state auditor's office, excuse me. Yes. And the question posed to them was, would, would staff time spent processing applications for the assessor's property tax exemption program for veterans be allowable use for the Veterans Assistance Program? And the response is, while our office does not have constitutional or statutory authority to provide legal advice or perform original legal research, I am not aware of any requirement that would prohibit the county from using veteran assistance program funds for staff time spent processing exemption applications. There would have to be tracking of that time and, um, so this would be something that the assessor's office would have to put into works to be able to use this funding. But the request before you is to move it out of the veterans' fund and do 100% of the general fund.
So, so let's talk though a little bit about the reason that this request is before you. At the time of the budget, you asked, can the veteran fund be used? We got a legal opinion that yes, it can. And as you heard, the state auditor has said, yes, it can. However, the requirements of the veterans' fund under the state law have certain steps that you must take to ensure that the veteran is eligible to receive the assistance. And it's my understanding, and Stephen is here, that those steps place an undue burden on the assessor's office. They don't retain the type of documentation that we would need to have successful audits later on. And so the cost allocation method just became over, not overwhelming, that's not the word, but burdensome in an undue fashion. So that's the reason, and I'm sure not to put words into Stephen's mouth, but that's the reason we're before you suggesting that this method was perhaps not the best way to go.
Also, the, the requirements to be consistent with the Veterans Advisory Fund is not a requirement for an individual to qualify for the exemptions under the state program currently. So this would be additional requirement someone would have to fulfill.
Stephen's office is not currently required to do these extra steps.
So the exemption, to be eligible for the exemption, you don't have to be a veteran. But if you are a veteran, like we're using, we could use that money just to specially process their application.
Process time. Yep, we were, we were trying to assist the office in avoiding a budget cut by providing this funding instead.
Is there any? So ha- having had you, we've used that money for this process for the last six months? Do we have?
No, I don't think it ever started.
Okay.
So we've been tracking our time, but we have not submitted a claim.
Okay.
My, my question would be, I'm not sure the question that you asked.
That was the question that the auditor's office chose to ask.
Right.
Okay, but I don't think the question was proper because it almost made it sound like it's gonna be working for, uh, on veterans' requests. And I don't think it is, I don't think it was gonna be exclusively.
That's, uh.
On veterans, so the question wasn't. We can't, we can't get a proper answer from those we ask questions of if we don't ask the question properly. That's all I'm saying. Could you read that first part of that again? See if I missed something?
Yes, Commissioner. So the question posed was, again, this was a question that our internal auditor sent to the state. Right, and the question posed, would staff time spent processing applications for the assessor's property tax exemption programs for veterans be allowable use of the?
For, for veterans, that's the key.
Right. And we did phrase it that, I don't think that the question was.
Because there's gonna be more to it than just for, for veterans, as far as I can see. I mean, how are you gonna delineate between the two, you know?
That's the issue.
Are you arguing for this or against this? I can't.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out whether or not, if we asked the question right, did we get the right answer?
Because you feel that maybe the answer that it's allowed, you're thinking maybe it's not allowable?
I think the answer might have been it was not allowable if it was just a partial use of that position, you know?
It is a partial use of the position. And what the state auditor came back with is, yes, it's an allowable use.
It's just a pain in the neck to track.
As long as you follow proper cost allocation.
I see Stephen.
You had a line at the assessor's office that said veterans only in this line, have your DD2 or.
No, even then.
Pin to your chest, that would make it doable.
It's not the whether or not they're eligible, it's the additional work. And Stephen's got his hand up if the chair.
Chair.
Recognize.
Commissioners, the construct of the two programs.
Yeah, come up here, just, I'm worried that the microphones. I'm just wondering if the microphones were picking up over there.
So first, thank you for hearing me and for those online. I'm Steve Drew, the Thurston County Assessor. So Commissioners, the construct of the two programs are just very different. So the senior exemption program administered by my office is structured and consistent with the fact that I'm directly accountable to the voters. And so I deputize my employees. They review financial documents for every senior in the existing program. They attest to the fact that they've reviewed and verified those documents. They swear to that it is on my name and my integrity and my direct accountability. It's totally different from how the, the veterans' program is administered. Veterans' program is administered based upon proof, which is a discharge document from the military. So it would have me asking, or my staff asking every senior, I mean, this is the core problem. It's, it's a gray area as to whether it is appropriate or not, but it comes down to, if it's appropriate, we have to get the DOD document from the senior. Being a veteran is not a requirement for qualifying for the senior exemption program. So I would tell you that it's inappropriate for me to insist on a document in order to proceed with reviewing a senior application. Further, we don't wanna hold on to those documents because they then become a public record. And so that's where, that's where the clash is. It's not my unwillingness to take on an administrative burden, though I will tell you that the administrative burden for this program, if it were to move forward, is greater than the general fund money that we would be shifting to the veterans' fund. We not only would have to count every interaction and define every interaction, then we have to go through a study of what the value of an hour is. And then we have to submit an invoice that I assume is reviewed by the veterans' board, who, if I was on the veteran, a veteran on the veterans' board, I wouldn't be crazy about this thing to begin with, so I might be pretty strict on my interpretation. And so that give and take and that back and forth and that administrative time, my appeal is, please make my FTE whole. We made a really good effort, many people at this table, to adequately explore this alternative. And, and what we came with is, it's a stretch, we're gonna bring rain upon the county, maybe successfully, maybe not successfully. And we're gonna spend a whole bunch of administrative time, more, I would say, money than, than the cost of what we're talking about. So I'm gonna back up. Thank you.
Good explanation.
All right. Think further on this one, or should I move on to the next? So line three, the auditor is asking for nine FTEs that are associated with the elections to increase their funding, their compensation in the amount of $20,000 in 2024 and $50,000 in 2025. This was included in the class and comp study, and it was determined that this election staff are under market. And so this would be a 5% increase, as the auditor states, as a good faith effort to recognize this, the election staff under market.
So this is what you've given direction to Maria to work on, and this is an example, with, with all due respect to the auditor, of her office wanting to address this issue outside of the process. And in this case, I'm not talking about the budget process, I'm talking about the labor and compensation process. So you've already given Maria direction to bargain with those classes that are outside the class and comp below market, according to the study. And this is not the time to bring this forward.
But we do need to fix it at some point.
You absolutely need to fix this. I have no qualms that we need to address this. And again, you've given direction to Maria.
And, and do we have a timeline that we can, say we don't do this, but we're working on it?
We can certainly ask Cameron where we're at in the bargaining. This must be bargained.
I, just to clarify, I thought, you know, we reviewed all of the reclassifications. We decided we're gonna move forward and HR was going to bring them up.
That's right.
And so is this kind of like a separate move from the auditor? Just, are these the same positions that we already said that, yeah, we're gonna move them through? Okay.
And is that gonna be? Like? Is the timing gonna match? Cause like, this is partially anecdotal, but when I was going through with the auditor and we were looking at a, we weren't looking at every single position, but we were looking at a chart that had a whole bunch, and every single position was at or above market except for this one. In, in, in the smaller group that we were looking at.
Right.
And there's this, um, we're going into like probably the most difficult presidential election in recent memory. So, or, or, yeah, or, or ever.
Since the last one.
So I mean, is, this one kind of is, has a, you know, in those two respects, this one kind of has a unique posture to me. So I'm just wondering, is the timing that Maria's working on gonna help us get those folks where they need to be before the, the need to hire them and have them working for this very, very important election?
So that is a great conversation that we can tee up for you to have with Maria.
Okay.
So then, the next one, line four here, is the auditor is requesting in Financial Services to remove the end date for a position that is funded through ARPA. Asking to take the end date off of that and make it a permanent position in the amount of $140,000 or $150,000.
I'm sorry, my, my brain's not moving quite fast enough.
Sure.
$150,000, remove end date from Financial Services.
So currently in Financial Services, there is a position that is funded for ARPA.
Oh, in ARPA.
For ARPA. And they're asking to take that position, no longer making it a temporary position, but making it a permanent position, so taking the.
So remove the end date, take it out of ARPA, fund it in general fund.
Is the position funded through ARPA or is the position exist to administer?
So this is, this particular position has a long backstory. At the time we received the ARPA funding, the board ultimately approved two positions, one in the commissioner's office for ARPA and one in the auditor's office for ARPA. The, both positions came with an end date of December 31st of 2024. The position in the commissioner's office is devoted 100%, and their time is charged 100% to ARPA. I don't know what percentage of this position's time to ARPA, what, how much?
I'd have to look into the percentage, but it's not full time.
It's, it varies depending on the time. But over the course of a year, it's approximately 10%. And the rest is charged to general fund, even though that that was not the intent of the board.
When, when you say for ARPA. When, when you say for ARPA, that these positions exist for the administration of ARPA funds?
To support the administration of the ARPA program.
And it's funded with ARPA funds?
That part of work that they do attached is, is funded and paid for out of the ARPA money.
So their existence is for ARPA, but the ARPA money's gone, so why?
No, the ARPA money's not gone.
Well, it will be.
We have ARPA money in the fund that is available to cover administrative costs, that's part of the allowable costs. And we have earmarked some for that purpose. These positions end at the end of this year and where we go after this year, I think is part of the decision that the board should be making in the midterm. This is not the time to remove an end date from a position when the end date is December thirty first.
And then the discussion at that point is, do we retain these positions even though there's no funding to support them?
Basically, you're funding a new position for financial services.
Yeah, it's no longer anything to do with ARPA.
Right.
Well, except we are obligated to spend the ARPA money until what, the end of twenty six or something?
Right. And, and currently, the budget office administers the ARPA fund.
But you're just saying right now is not the time.
That's correct, you don't see the other position on this list. It's because the midterm is the time to come.
I guess I just have like a higher level viewpoint on this that, I mean, we just went through cuts and, you know, I understand the assessor's one is a correction basically on a decision that we made, but then like other requests, like, I just, we don't, I mean, looking at the general fund, I, we're not much better off than what we were last year. And if we're going to be adding positions into the general fund, then I, we're not really trying to mitigate the impact.
Oh, and now is not the time. In my opinion, now is not the time to consider that. Because again, others didn't know that now was the time to ask.
So that comes back to your fairness clause.
It does.
So when might we talk about this?
In the midterm.
Okay, which isn't too far away.
This fall.
So line five is another request from the auditor, this is a reclassification from education outreach to position to a position, a program manager. The change would be about nine thousand dollars in twenty twenty five and then in twenty twenty four, it's twenty eight, twenty seven thousand dollars. When a position comes before you as a reclass, our process is that if that is awarded or allowed to reclass it, that they absorb that cost in the current year.
So I'm not sure if this is one of the ones on the list.
This is one of the ones on the list and as of last Friday, HR had not received the classification request from the auditor's office.
So the, the, our process is if a reclass is requested mid-cycle, that the officer department would absorb the cost.
And there's vacancy money in there or something, is that it?
Uh, we'd have to look and see how much the auditor reverted last year.
But there would be a separate item to come before us to do the reclass?
Yes, that's the direction that you've given HR to bring all those existing reclass requests forward.
When?
Uh, that is something we're going to need to check in with Maria, I think it's in the works.
I feel like it's April thirtieth, it's in the, it's in the AIS schedule already.
Line six and seven, the prosecuting attorney is asking to increase funding for salaries and his position is currently covered fifty fifty, where fifty percent is coming from the state. This request is asking for the difference of eighteen thousand dollars with the amount that is just covered from the revenue that comes from the state. So not the side that the general fund would necessarily pick up. So this would be a wash, this would be the revenue that's coming in.
It's just accounting for that additional revenue that comes in from the state and allowing that to be used.
Right, on the fifty percent, on the fifty percent that the state takes in. So then line eight, during the budget process, there was discussions about extending the court backlog positions that were originally funded out of ARPA. Decision during that time was to extend all court backlog positions that were filled. However, there was one position, the deputy prosecuting attorney position within the PAO that was not extended. And so this request is asking to extend that position because it was not filled at the time.
So why not is because you had committed at the time all of the available ARPA money and made a choice that if the prosecutor, public defense, the courts, whoever had been granted ARPA positions, if they had not been filled by that time, that we would not be funding them from ARPA going forward. Well, the prosecutor has subsequently filled one of the positions and is now asking for the money out of ARPA to go forward. You had already earmarked all of the ARPA money, which is what led to the, the decision about if it's filled, we'll fund it, if it's not, we won't.
But even though we've earmarked that money, it has not been expended all of it.
You may have some money freed up in ARPA, is this the thing you want to use it for? Because we're getting quite a few community requests, your transportation is eligible now for ARPA. You've got quite a few other items that you might choose. Once again, this is the, when you look at things in isolation, you don't know that you're using the money on the most important things.
Okay, like getting back to that community request, I remember one that came in. Did we get the message out to the community at large about, well, we've got one, are you requesting anything?
We are working on that process and we'll present it to you when we talk about ARPA in May.
Okay. And then we can discuss this at the same time.
Absolutely, we can put this in the ARPA bucket at that time. And there is more than enough ARPA appropriation to cover it.
Can we buy a pontoon boat with the ARPA money? I get bored, I have to say stupid things every once in a while.
So the last request, a policy level personnel request in this packet is for a program manager in community planning. And this is associated with the habitat conservation program. And during the amendment process, we don't necessarily ask for new FTEs.
This should be in the midterm.
So if we don't do these, you know, if we don't honor or consider or like, like to do these types of requests, how, why are we getting? I understand that like the discussion we had yesterday, it's not, you don't gatekeep the information you share.
Exactly right.
And, and that's great, but.
We put out the instructions.
And they're just not followed. Okay.
And so that's when we as a board have to, like, be like, we're sending these instructions, right? Or to be equitable across all offices and departments?
So then the people that follow the instructions are potentially penalized?
Losers, if you will, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, hmm, interesting, okay.
So then the next packet here is just leave with policy level, because we're done with the personnel ones. And the first line here is for the assessor's mobile maintenance, uh, mobile assessors. There is maintenance associated with assessor's mobile software. And so this was approved during the twenty four, twenty five biennium, mobile assessor. And what this is, is software that the assessor's office will be using. It was included in the rates, so they have iPads that they would have replaced, they're no longer going to replace those, instead they're going to go with mobile assessor. However, there is maintenance associated with that. And so they're asking to include the maintenance in the REIT tech fund for this year and twenty twenty four. And then going forward, it would be included in the rates.
Do the next one.
Okay, so lines two and three, this is.
Can I stop real quick? Cause I've talked to the assessor, this was something of an oversight, is this the one? Okay.
So there was an oversight, Commissioners, if you recall?
Sorry, just the microphone.
So if you recall in the discussion about mobile assessor, which we laid out, could be implemented without using general fund money. This was one of the components, is the annual maintenance fee in the first year. Then there was the acquisition cost, which, which came out of an IT replacement fund. It's because it's consistent with the overall assessor software package, which is in a future purchase. Then there's also the computers in the replacement fund. It actually costs us less to buy iPads, which are what are utilized with mobile assessor than the tough pads that we have now. So, so it was all discussed with you, it was part of what you approved in the budget. We made an error, we had a, a new administrative assistant, executive assistant, position was being eliminated. We had never utilized the REIT technology fund for a fee, we'd only used it for salary. And when it's used for an FTE, we don't process it the same way. So it was our error, we're just cleaning up that error. Does that help? Thank you.
So then lines two and three here is, the auditor has spring elections, in which during the budget process, they didn't have the ability to forecast what those costs would be. So they're asking just to increase their authority to process the spring elections and also book the revenue that would be associated with, with doing that elections.
We just didn't know that there wouldn't be.
Right, so.
There was an election in February and there's another election in April.
It's unanticipated revenue. They say they'll be able to bill more than they thought they had been able to.
Okay, so then line four here is for the law enforcement services contract lieutenant. This is booking the revenue expenses to be able to process that. Line five here is for the US Secret Service contract as well, this is for the expenses and the revenue that would be booked with that contract. Line six and seven, this is for increases of cost of living cost associated with the medical services that corrections the jail receives. This is in the amount of forty seven thousand dollars, it's split between the general fund and TST. And so they're saying that this is a three percent cost of living increase for that services that we contract out for medical services.
Why did we not know about that in the budget cycle?
So the timing of the contract.
They, they got the information in November.
I have a question, can they not find the sixteen hundred dollars somewhere else to not have to take it out of TST? A really small amount.
You could choose to ask the sheriff to absorb these costs, which would be finding it somewhere else. And considering the amount of reversions.
Right.
That's not unreasonable.
Okay, thank you.
So then line eight is associated with medical services, this is a hundred thousand dollar ask in the general fund, also with corrections. So they're seeing that from risk management, the insurance costs have increased by a hundred thousand dollars and they're asking for authority. This is a change and it says the medical malpractice insurance requirements that equate to a hundred thousand dollars. Right? Line nine is in the ERNR fund and this is to make adjustments to the ERNR replacement fund. The vehicles included in this, there's a sheriff's office vehicle, some roads and engineering, emergency management vehicles and solid waste vehicles and the amount of five hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. So these are additions to ERNR that need to be replaced in twenty twenty four. And line ten is a carryover from Parks and Trails Asset Management Project. So original funding was for fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty two for the asset management project that was awarded at that time. Public Works continues to roll that money forward, so it was awarded a fifty thousand in twenty twenty two. There was rollover into twenty twenty three and the eleven thousand dollars left of that original appropriation, so they're asking to spend it in twenty twenty four. I've spoken with Public Works and this is for professional services and they're looking to have this project finished in twenty twenty four. So this is a rollover of previously approved funding.
And it's not in the carryover category because it is general fund and general fund specifically lapses at the end of the year? Last, last set.
The last packet. So the last packet before you is policy level, this is for capital projects, so this impacts our capital budget. And so the first line here is for a solid waste compactor, so throughout the year in twenty twenty three, and the compactor has been down many times. And so they're asking to purchase another compactor to have abundance. And that is the amount of six hundred thousand dollars and it would come out of the solid waste reserves fund. Line two here.
And this, this is tipping fees that cover this?
So line two here is for the US 101 Shiner REIT project, they're asking to increase funding of five hundred thousand dollars. Public Works is stating that the additional funding is needed to support revised construction costs that were based on sixty percent design. And also the need for increased inspection support, as well as the lengthening of the project schedule has also increased. So they're asking to increase this project by five hundred thousand dollars to be paid out of storm and surface water capital fund. Line three here.
I, I do have a question about that. Why is it that we're putting in filtration ponds on a state highway? It's an actual federal highway too, I think, why are we doing that?
I'd have to get details from Public Works as to why, that is the answer. I would say that this was.
Now, I'm not against doing it as much as I, I don't understand.
Public Works.
I mean, it's like their right of way, their road system that needs to be. So, can we find out?
I think that under the, in, in the NPDS. The county's got certain responsibilities, but we can, we can check on that.
And there is a nexus between ARPA structure and 101, they're out of.
Well, yeah, especially if there was an intersection, but I don't see that necessarily, I mean.
Right. We'll get information on this project.
So line here, here is for the Grand Mound Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion Project. And they're asking to reduce the budget for this project and the reason for this is the requirements for this project, what they thought would be able to fix some of the issues that were around with Grand Mound expansion, do not align with what the project was originally scoped with. So the result was that it needs to be taken care of using water rights and so they're reducing this project, the budget for this and being able to purchase water rights, which cannot be purchased with REIT's funding. So the lines here, three and four.
Money, it's not, it's not, it's not stopping that project, it's taking that money and saying we need to use after buy water rights.
This project would. They're saying that this project is not.
Feasible or viable.
Yeah, this is a project we would not do.
So no longer do this project, but however, purchase water rights to fix the issue. And so that is in line seven, where they're actually going to purchase water rights instead of doing the expansion. So they're decreasing the budget in the expansion project and purchasing water rights to still fix the issue. But you can't purchase water rights with REIT and this fund, this project was funded with REIT.
And we're no longer funding the expansion project?
That's correct, that's, that's exactly what this decision would be, to not go forward with the expansion.
But to purchase water rights instead. That's, I mean, that's.
They're related, but they're separate.
Purchasing the water rights is what allows us to discharge into the river?
I'm gonna.
So that's a detail, but it says that the acquisition of the water rights, it satisfies the intent of the Grand Mound Wastewater Treatment Expansion Project.
I thought they discharged into the ground there, don't they?
So we may need to chat with Public Works on why this is the, the better plan.
Cause it's not treated to Class A now, it's treated to Class B and so there's, the issue was, they needed to either treat it completely or borrow more water rights so that they can discharge, continue to discharge Class B, is that?
And I don't know how that addresses the expansion need was to provide water to a growing community. So it, it may help to get Public Works to chat.
I think we can, we can, yeah, definitely bring back some information. It really was. It really was trying to, we had a certain, under the current permit, we had to go down a certain path. This allows for an alternative to that that is less expensive, but.
And it has to do with the discharge of the whatever we create.
The, the level of treatment prior to discharge, where it's being discharged and what benefit there ultimately would be.
Yeah.
Into that, that creek system. So, but we can bring back additional information.
Add more information.
Okay.
On both the Schneider Creek as well as this one.
And so lines three all the way to line seven is that what we would bring back to you from work for clarification? Because again, lines three and four are reducing that budget from that project. Lines five and six are asking for funding for improvements to the Grand Mound Waste Water Treatment Plant. And then line seven is purchasing water rights. So we can speak to Public Works and see how all of this plays out and, and what the intent is.
This is asking for. Go ahead. No.
I was gonna say it might be helpful to just have a work session on the Grand Mound water.
Yeah, let me, let me jump in with Rob and we'll talk to Public Works and we'll come back to Commissioner on.
I think I requested that, wasn't it?
Yeah. Getting some more information.
Maybe four. So I, it's already on the list cause I.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I requested this week because we were talking about something having to do with water rights. And I was like, it's actually a good time to do an update on it.
It is a good time to talk about the whole plan.
So then the last line is line eight. And this is for Marvin Road upgrades to phase one from Twenty Second Ave to Mill's Road. And so this is a partnership with the city of Lacey where they will cover the cost. So you see the revenue and expenses here to work on the sanitary sewer work and also design and permitting for this project. And this is the last request I have before you.
So that's a whole lot for an amendment, but the bulk of it is technical and unanticipated. There are a few items that would, you know, in my words, are we're not following the rules, if you will.
I've seen worse.
Much worse. Yes, we've had worse. So overall it's a lot, but it's, you know, for the most part, we didn't burn.
I guess can, I would like to go back just to the two, the two items on the policy personnel level. The one from the auditor and the one from C P A, if that's okay. So with, we're gonna be on the policy personnel and then the first one is going to be number four, which is the removal of the end date.
Okay.
So.
For the ARPA position two of.
Yeah, for the ARPA position. So, but you're saying that, well, technically this position isn't fully ARPA funded, right? So there's already a general fund expense that's coming from this position. And then the request, so how much of it is already coming out of general fund?
We'll have to follow up on precisely how much that is.
Because then it, it just, you know, I, I don't think that then that this really reflects it because if there's already, the position's already like either fifty or sixty percent general fund covered, then.
Should be reflected in there.
There's, there's already, there's already an expenditure that we're paying for and this is just. But you're saying that this, something like this should come in the next budget amendment.
It should be in the midterm.
Oh, in the midterm and.
It's a request for, it's basically a request for a position that's not currently funded in twenty twenty five because it has an end date.
Okay. And so the request is to remove the end date. Okay. Thank you. And then the community planning one.
Which line?
And this is line nine.
Basically a new program.
And it's not connected to like a grant or because we've been receiving a couple of grants for this position and.
This is, that specific one would be providing staff support to oversee the habitat conservation program. So right now that is within existing staffing within C P A that are doing that, that are also working on our comp plan, et cetera. So this is specifically a request to help manage that whole program. So identifying properties, working on acquisitions, all of those types of pieces that we need to do in order to have the properties and parcels for needing our incidental tape permit.
That wasn't budgeted.
It was a budgeted.
Not budgeted within the financial structure of the H C P.
Nope. And you can use the revenue, you know, once we start receiving mitigation revenue, which we are, yeah, woo hoo, it's working. So that mitigation revenue can be used in part to pay for this position. But the, the, you know, the reason I'm recommending say no now, not say, say no forever, but say no now, because this is not the time to create new positions. New ideas, new positions.
I have a, just to follow up on that, but it seems like we have, in Public Works, we have a person that deals with property acquisition and right of ways and all kinds of.
We do.
Different things. Is there any chance that just because it's a different activity, it could be part of the funding for that? Maybe it can be picked up.
There is indeed a reason it can't be part of the funding for that. That's where you get down to the, one fund may not benefit another and those positions are paid for mainly with road funds that can't be used for this purpose.
Well, just looking for a stretch.
So a stretch is what got us into this position with the assessor.
Somebody to do this work, but you could use the funds created from this to pay that person to do this work, right?
You could. If, if that person had capacity.
Yes.
I mean, you'd have to look at that and I would not recommend that. I think you're going to need someone in C P A to do this work full time because they're not only going to be looking for acquisition of property, they're going to be managing the contracts for the land management of these habitats. So.
Much more than acquisition.
Way more, way more.
And as our portfolio increases.
You also don't want to pay the overhead for paying Public Works.
My concern, my concern's not with that. It's just that we built the mitigation fee structure to try to capture the true cost of program. And now, you know, not that you can be perfect, but it's a, you know, it's a little frustrating to see that there's something that frankly, could have been contemplated and probably should have been and built into the structure instead of being asked for from the general fund later.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering just to kind of follow up. Is this? I mean, is this in response to, and it's not, I'm not saying that it's general fund here. It's from the habitat conservation mitigation. So it's not general fund. But I, I guess my, my question is, is this in response to a request that the board has made, right? And this is why it was submitted. Because I know the board has requested a lot of, a lot of expectations and made a lot of expectations out of C P A in terms of permits and is this.
This is not related to permits whatsoever.
It isn't related to anything. Do we know from the department, did the genesis of, of this position come from, hey, there's a new demand or is it the program that's put in place as Commissioner Mensah mentioned? Now we have this other need that wasn't contemplated because the workload is increasing.
So I would say it's the latter in my assessment. Because we knew, I think that perhaps this is a result of the success of the program, let's say. Because we've been very successful in finding the habitat land purchase. We're, I don't know that we're necessarily ahead of schedule for that, but we are finding these properties and putting in them in place. And so the need has arisen to think about how we're going to manage that. It's not like we didn't talk about that as we built the program over the last decade that it took to get an H C P. We knew that we were going to eventually have to manage these lands, but the intent has always been to manage them through contracted land management. So C P A is now saying with the expansion, we really need someone now to manage the contracts. Yeah, manage the land managers. Yeah. So it is growing, but again, you know, my.
Maybe we're not there yet.
Exact, that is what I'm suggesting. This is not the time.
Yeah. And just to make the point, like if, if, if the funding's from the mitigation fees, great. But that just means we'll have less money to buy, purchase more land. So eventually it's going to come back and bite us somehow if we didn't figure, if we didn't think about it upfront.
Right. And it's not that we didn't contemplate that we were going to need land management. We just always.
I, I actually remember that we did have some discussion.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here, those were yours, right? Did you have anything else that covered you?
No, those worked too.
Okay. What's next then Nicole?
So next is, so what did the general fund, all the requests are before you. Like, I was just showing that presentation one more time.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the last one.
This is the last one? Oh, no, no, no.
Looked like you had it.
Go back, 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 back. Back to the PowerPoint. There. I didn't say, how you went too far. There's the schedule. There, there's the.
Blank.
Hey. The picture is on there.
That's why I was confused.
Maybe it's next. No, next.
It's just not there.
We've got a hard copy, so.
We're playing video games.
Okay, do you, I'll stop sharing then so you can share it. Oh, I do have a question that I did not see on here. In any of these requests, I think one of the requests was the transfer to, from the general fund to the road fund. Is that a policy level or is that just a decision?
Policy level decision and thank you for bringing that up because we did not put in a, a change request for that. But we can certainly talk about it now when Nicole brings up the forecast graph. Well, while you're bringing that up, I'll, I'll go ahead and start the discussion. So as you have discussed in, in the last few budget briefings, our general fund fund balance is four million dollars higher as we closed twenty twenty three than we had anticipated at the time the budget was closed. And you see that with the proposals before you, Nicole and her team have added all the proposals up and this is the impact to the general fund. You're actually in a better position at this point in time than you were when you passed the budget. So a suggestion that had come up since when you adopted the budget, it included approximately five million over two years above the, the transfer to the road front. And you increased the levy shift to be able to keep the general fund in a good position. And a suggestion came from the board to take part of that four million dollars, if not all of it, transfer that back to the road fund to make up for some of the shifts. So that's the concept.
Would this also be an appropriate time to talk about possibly using some of the excess revenue to fix the juvenile jails?
Yes, that is also.
It should, why would, that's just, it just wasn't a request made?
Correct.
Just asleep at the wheel, somebody, or is this just?
We did not, we don't have a funding solution for that.
Follow on the rules and some aren't.
But that would be an appropriate request.
We don't have the design ready, so we don't know what that project's gonna really cost.
Okay.
So staff were reluctant to come forward with a request when we don't have a. I mean, that, that is, you know.
Yeah.
But you could definitely earmark.
Yeah.
Let's say a million dollars for that fund once we've got the design work done.
But we can't wait for the design work to be done for this process, right?
No, you're not gonna have the design.
Five million and, you know, if we don't use it, it gets reverted back. Is that?
That's right.
The, I mean, this, this looks better than the last time we were playing with this model. But I'm trying to remember the last time we were playing with the model. I think we were looking at all the different potential scenarios for labor increases.
That does not include any of that that might come forward.
So, you know, like looking at, you know, when I look at that, that kind of. When I look at that, that kind of satisfies my minimum comfort level because, you know, we're going below our projected thing, but, but we've got a plan and we're, and we're getting back there or a medium frame period of time. So, but, you know, the hits, the hits that could be coming with COLAs and, not COLAs, but different new labor contracts could be.
The other thing that this reflects, one of the reasons that this looks better than the last time you saw it is because the budget team has transferred in the transfer step, moving operations for the sheriff, public defense and prosecutor criminal work out of the general fund. They transferred the entire budget appropriation out of general fund into the public safety sales tax. But they did not transfer exactly that amount of revenue out. They only transferred out the maintenance of effort levels. So before we do anything with this, we need to take a look at the public safety sales tax fund to make sure that it is still in the, in the black, if you will, or if you need to choose to transfer more money out of general fund to keep that fund whole.
So whatever the appropriation that was approved during the twenty four budget and twenty five budget, that entire appropriation for those departments were applicable, was transferred into the public safety sales tax. So you see a decrease in expenses in the general fund based off of that. Then you see the M O E that was approved based on the twenty twenty three budget levels that is expensed in general fund because you're moving that revenue out. And there is a difference there. There is more appropriation for those departments versus the actual revenue that you will be transferring out. And so the, the fund, the forecast you see before you has that difference in there. You're about a two to a three million, two to three million dollar increase to the general fund, making it appear better. So in the budget discussion, say in the midterm, if you decide when you're looking at the public safety sales tax funds, that they should get, that more revenue from the general fund should go there to support those operations and make that fund whole. That would impact your general fund look.
Or, or even now.
Or even now, if you decide, if you decide to do it now, don't turn to.
Before you make this decision, they need to.
So, so can I make a request? Cause now.
Ask.
I would like consideration given to earmarking, you said a million. Is that, is that enough? One point two?
I don't, I don't, I don't know where it's gonna land because we're too early in the design work. The guys, we can go back and see what the current estimate is, but it was about around one point two million.
Okay. So earmark that knowing that we're making a request to the feds for the money and then have that set aside in case we don't receive our federal request.
So we can add that to the list of decisions that you'll be making on?
On Monday, the twenty ninth.
Twenty nine. No decisions today.
Well, one, one positive is that, isn't, didn't you say this was if all the amendments are granted? And, and. And, and we've said, we've preliminarily suggested to wait on a few of them.
Yeah.
A few of them that were pretty significant. So it, that's one positive from this, if we were to follow those suggestions.
And then is the road fund going to be included on there as well?
We will, we will include an item for your decision day on the road, putting money back in the road fund.
And I'll be advocating for that piece of things. Our, I think we've seen the status of the road fund and our CHIPS sealed project is going to be suffering this year if we don't do something about it, so.
Either way, this is a good time to mention that Rob and I did have a conversation with Jennifer, Karen, and Matt and Nicole about the road fund, their making adjustments, if you will, to the financial plan to reflect our current understanding of assumptions going forward, to clean that up and bring to you and have the conversation again about the revenue options for the Transportation Benefit District or the TBD. And in that conversation, just wanted to make you aware that should you want to put something on the ballot, given the date, it would need to be on the general election ballot in November because we don't have enough time to get something turned in for the primary. So that's, I mean, time is quickly passing. This year is just flying. So yes, we'll make sure. Is there anything else that you would like us to have on the list for consideration that you did not hear today?
I do have a little additional information about the Schneider Creek project, Stormwater Project in One on One. It's actually being funded out of stormwater fees that are paid by WASHDOT. They are, they're funded.
Makes sense then.
So then the next thing I would add is that the Budget Office has continued to be transparent with the citizens and what's going on with the budget. And so we have updated our, after this meeting, we will update the budget website. It will include all of these requests that were before you, that you viewed, so that citizens can see that, as well as it has the calendar for the amendment process. We've also put together a balancing act prioritization expertise tool, and that will be able to allow the citizens to select and rank the policy level requests that are before you, so that can also be seen on Monday, April 29th, when we come back before you, and letting you see what the citizens have considered were, was most important to them. So that's all the policy level requests and the policy level personnel requests. Any policy level requests that have offsetting revenue, those are not included in the ability for the citizens to rank, but that is based off of our last conversation about being transparent about the amendments. That is something the Budget Office has put together.
Can you clarify, I knew you just said it, but what part is not going to be allowed for them to rank?
Okay, so the only thing included is policy level personnel.
Okay.
And then any policy level requests that do not have an offsetting revenue for general fund, for general fund.
Okay, thank you.
All the technical stuff, all the grant stuff, all of that, you really need to do.
And they're not requests necessarily.
Uh, they're fixes.
Thank you.
And so that will be up today until, for a week, and then we'll be able to share with you the results of that when we come back. And our next steps, when we come back on Monday, April 29th, will be final decision, so we'll have follow-up answers for you and those items added to the errata list, those that we want to consider that were not presented to you today. And then we will also publish the intent to amend the budget on May 21st and 28th. I would just add that any decisions made on April 29th will be included in the intent to amend the budget on the 21st and 28th, and then adoption on the June 4th. If at any time you would like to not approve a specific item on June 4th, that the budget has to be adopted in whole, so you don't have that option. So whatever decisions that you make on the 29th, and that's posted in the paper, that is what's up for adoption on June 4th. And so you're either adopting all of it or you're saying no to all of it, but there's no way to change that. The reason for that is because by law, when we pu- post to the public what it is that we're amending, they are seeing that total change and that is what you're, you're voting on. That's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Dean.
All right. So we're now going to reset the room and get ready for the staff meeting that starts at noon. Oh, my apologies.
Sorry, okay.
The budget, where are you?
Munch?
Yeah, exactly. Drop the mic.
We still have two shirts items. One kind of hanging fire from my, and the other, just wanted to-
I attended the Monarch Breakfast this morning where they retired Astro, the Monarch helping dog, after 12 years of service. He, his little blue vest was removed and, I don't know if it's like hung in a stadium somewhere, but it was pretty cool. And that, all the Monarch staff were just up there crying because they're, it was pretty touching, and you could tell how much they really care about the dogs and how much of an asset the dogs are to that organization, so that was, that was kind of fun. That's my item.
Uh, I was at the Fire Commissioners Meeting last night. Besides the letter that we received, it looks like there's at least two other Fire Commissioners that are in service areas along Capital Forest there that feel they might be getting affected. Haven't got any numbers yet, so.
The cuts that were identified in the West Therson Letter have not, those, those are future, nothing that's been done has, has, has any-
Nothing's going to affect, they're all speculations.
That's all prospective. The three, they were three, the three cuts identified are cuts that we've listed as ones that have legacy for us, and we'd like to find an alternative strategy, but they're future cuts.
So no, no reduction to anybody yet?
But yeah.
Including down at School District?
Well, I don't know about School District, but I just taken the three identified in the West Therson Letter, which was Evergreen Coal, Radegast, and Class Dismissed, I think are the three cuts. That's it. Mr. Claus, did you want to read, read, I know you had-
Yeah, so, um-
Issue from last week or earlier this week.
Thank you. I was just wanting to bring up this letter again now that everyone's had time to read it, to see if anyone had thoughts they would like to share on the requests made by staff regarding the hiring of Chris Burbank.
Anyone?
Quiet. It's okay. Um, I guess I can start by saying that I believe their requests are reasonable, and I'd like to see how, as a board, we can support them. I know I spoke with a couple of my seatmates, and one thought that came up was, not necessarily a forum, but some kind of open conversation with staff to see how we can begin with either fulfilling these requests or getting a better understanding of them if we need to do that. But I just kind of wanted to see where my seatmates are with that.
I, I think we're addressing most of the issues listed myself. I think we're moving in that direction. I don't know if we need to do anything special.
Can you elaborate on what you think we're already doing?
That, I didn't bring my letter down with me, but the list of things here, I think we're already, although maybe not in the exact verbiage they're proposing, I think the intent of what we're doing is headed in that direction.
What kind of-
And I'm not, and I'm not looking at scolding the sheriff about any of his activities. That's kind of where I'm at.
I, I, you and I spoke, I met with DV yesterday to discuss the letter, and, you know, I, I, you know, I want to, I want to, you know, read it, I want to make sure that I'm listening. I think DV is, you know, kind of the subject matter expert, so, you know, I, I went to her and I go to her and I, I encouraged her ass, and I think she was already thinking about it, to, you know, necessarily conduct, you know, maybe some internal listening sessions. The, I don't, you know, the letter doesn't, in my mind, necessarily represent every county employee, you know, it doesn't speak for everyone, so you can't take it as that. And it also doesn't necessarily speak for our BIPOC employees either. It's, you know, I don't, I couldn't read half the names on there, and I'm not, it's not my job to vet who is, you know, an authentic, you know, speaker for the community, but, you know, I think DV, you know, the county has done, put effort into making sure that there's avenues for those discussions, and in my mind, like DV's the starting point for that. And, you know, like, I, so I, I kind of take, you know, I take her lead when it comes to, you know, that, that, that discussion.
Do you think then maybe a first step would be a conversation between DV and the board, or to determine like how we could set up staff to vocalize their concerns in a deeper way if we still have questions and need more context?
I would imagine she has the, the latitude to take that initiative on, and I, and I know she's already thinking about it and working on it, and to, you know, to conduct, you know, and facilitate communication is completely within, you know, her wheelhouse and, you know, her purview. And so I, you know, I look to her and I will, you know, I, I will continue to talk to her about it, and if she comes back and she's like, oh man, this is just the tip of the iceberg, let's have a big discussion, then that's what we do, is my thought. I'll stop.
Okay, I guess I'll go. Yeah, I read the letter, and I agree that the letter only reflects one department. It represents a small group of employees, and my belief is that that small group of employees cannot talk for the rest of the employees in the county, and they cannot talk for all the people of color in the county as well. Because then at that time, what we're doing is we're pushing an agenda on the backs of people of color, and we have to be careful of that as well. So I guess I've spoken with DV as well, and for me, if we really want to empower our employees to come up with different suggestions, because for some, you know, this is just a, a suggestions of, again, a group of employees who sign on to that letter, but there are others probably who have other ideas or other requests, and we don't want to say we're going to be pushing this just because these employees pushed this letter, right, and, and presented it to the board, and we're going to be silencing other employees with that. So for me is, you know, I believe that creating a resource groups that will provide the structured space for employees to kind of meet with DV and, you know, having those conversations of what it actually looks like, you know, and then at that point, DV can come back to the board and provide, you know, kind of, this is what these resource groups are saying, and maybe this might be the correct avenue that we should be approaching, but, so that for me would be a better way and an actual way of listening to what everyone else or the rest of our employees are saying, and creating an equitable avenue for everyone to share their concerns without also us overstepping maybe some other concerns that people might have, but we're not providing that avenue just because we're pushing kind of these demands from this letter. So that is my suggestion.
I, for me, I would agree with kind of where I heard the, the fourth piece. So the board created a framework for our racial equity program, and the Racial Equity Council was front and center there. The fourth element about the training and stuff, that was in the plan, and I would welcome, I would, I would welcome a discussion about how we can accelerate that work. I've been advocating for that since we got this all started, and so I think that's legit. The second and third elements seem related, and I'm interested in them, but that's where I would agree with my seatmates. I'd like to hear more detail about how we would structure it, what does that look like? I'm not as familiar with how that would be best set up. To me, that's exactly what the Racial Equity Council could maybe kind of chew on and develop some details for us to consider and more for that. Number one there about the statement, that one I, you know, I really wrestled with because I don't, you know, kind of what Mr. Edwards alluded to, what Delma Jackson alluded to at the, at the, at the Sheriff's Forum, you know, it's like, well, I can say, I had a 45-plus minute conversation with the sheriff the night I found out about all this, and I discussed with him the decision, I didn't agree with it, and I thought there would be harmful impacts, not to employees per se, but just across the community. And I wouldn't be comfortable with a statement that just had some special recognition for employees, because to me, the, the harm that, if there's harm of any significant degree, it's really out in the community, not, not so much, you know, anything specific to our employees, but for this board to wrestle with something like that, I think is probably not the best use of, of our effort. I'd like to see our, what I am pleased about is to see, you know, it's been difficult to get the racial equity work and program going, and we've had fits and starts with it, to, so to see that there's a lot of staff members that are behind that work and think it's really important gives me a good sense of energy to keep going and keep moving forward with all the things that we've tried to do and haven't done as well as we could have. So definitely want to use that as an inspiration to keep going with the work, because I think it's important. So I think we can take some of this and, and work with it for sure, you know. The framing of the letter wasn't my, wasn't, you know, the last sentence and the way it was framed wasn't something that I felt really comfortable about, but I'm going to set that aside and look at the substance and see what we can do to be positive about it.
Awesome, okay, thank you. I took a couple notes while everybody was talking. Let's see, so I agree with Commissioner Mahia that creating an equitable avenue for all concerns is a really good idea. I think that this kind of just gives us an initial idea, like an initial perspective from a group of employees. I know it's a small group, but I don't think that that minimizes the value of this letter because it's the people who felt comfortable coming forward and signing this letter, and there are probably several employees that didn't feel comfortable putting their name on this letter who may or may not agree with it. So I think that we also need to give an opportunity to uplift the voices of those who either didn't sign the letter or weren't part of it and not aware of it, but I do agree with Commissioner Mahia that we should create an equitable avenue, and I'd like to talk more about what that could look like. And then maybe in terms of like accelerating the work done, or the work stated and laid out in the Racial Equity Action Plan, I think that's a good idea too, and I think that this kind of gives us a platform to kind of start that conversation and say like, how can we accelerate this work that's being done? Because when we passed it back in November, we did all agree that we didn't want it to be something that just sits on a shelf and isn't talked about or implemented further. And so I think that using the momentum behind this is a good way to get that conversation started and really move this forward. And then on the first part regarding a statement, I can understand the concerns around releasing a statement. I also think some sort of statement is timely, but it doesn't necessarily have to be exactly what's written here. I think that there are a couple points that we've reached consensus about, and I do agree with Commissioner Minzer about how this impacted the broader community and not just staff. I would be interested in releasing some sort of statement that we are accelerating the work in the Racial Equity Plan, and that we've seen that this has impacted the community without necessarily, I mean, Commissioner Edwards brought up not wanting to scold the sheriff in a statement, and I can totally see that point. So perhaps we could release a statement just acknowledging what happened, because I do feel like if we don't acknowledge what happened, I know that last statement about being complicit kind of caused a little bit of tension for some of us, but I believe that if we don't do anything or take like a public approach to say, hey, we acknowledged something happened and we're working on it, then that is being complicit. I think that it's important to do something about this, just to show the staff that put the work into it, that we do care. I can imagine how difficult this letter would be to write and submit to us as staff. It could potentially make- Um, it could potentially make people feel like they're putting their jobs at risk because it's something that they care about a lot. So I think that it's really, really valuable. I know that there are some feelings around what was written here, but I think at the forefront of this conversation, we should be considering, number one, the harm that was caused that was stated in this letter, although it can't be generalized across the whole entire population of all of the staff, we know that. But it's important that we acknowledge harm was caused and they're coming forward and telling us that. Um, and I think that we should take an active role in trying to mitigate that harm however we can. So if, if we're, I mean, what do folks think about releasing some sort of statement, even if it's not necessarily what they're asking us for here? Just to say that we're working on, uh, improving, you know, improving and implementing the efforts of the racial equity action plan? Would people feel comfortable with that?
Commissioner Edwards?
Although you didn't say retaliation, I, I don't think there's ever been any retaliation that has ever taken place that I've been aware of from people speaking their minds. So I'm, I'm still, I'm letting sleeping dogs sleep, I guess. I'm, I, that's a, the whole thing is a done deal and we're gonna move on in my estimation. That's, that's kinda what I...
Okay. I just wanna say to you, oh, go ahead. Do you wanna say something first?
For me, I would, the type of statement that you're proposing sounds okay to me. I mean, I think, if you wanna draft something and let me look at it, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't wanna get into the thing with the sheriff either, because I felt like he and I listened to each other for a long time earlier last week and he came forward and had a public forum and he listened to the public and he heard a lot, back and forth, positive and negative. And I don't really wanna get into that piece of it at this juncture. I've said in this meeting how I felt about the decision. I've told the sheriff directly how I felt about it. Any staff wants to ask me about how I felt about what I thought about it, happy to have that conversation for the, it's kind of a, it's a big deal, which is why you're bringing it forward, right? It's a big deal when the board like releases a public statement that we all sign. So I mean, that's a big deal and I don't really wanna go further down that trail. Um, but if you wanna connect it to a motivation to, um, enhance our, and accelerate our racial equity work, I'm definitely willing to, to work with you on that or, or, or look at what you might propose myself.
I don't know, I, I kinda feel like there's two issues being conflated and I don't know that that's the right way to go about things. Uh, I, you know, kinda to piggyback off what Commissioner Minzer said, uh, the, the, the outcome that we got, I think a lot of it can be attributed to the relationships that are built. And I think that, you know, the scenario was not a good one, but the outcome and the ability to like move forward, having a situation like mitigated in a sense is good. And we need to be able to do that. And like lighting a bridge on fire does not help us be able to function effectively like that. So like I, you know, I, I would take pause on, you know, doing anything that, you know, kind of damages that. And, you know, like, and I, and I wrestle with the word harm and I, I hear, you know, what Commissioner Minzer said about, you know, the word harm. And I can, I can see the harm done in some of the decision-making in the relationship between the public and the county. It's, it's hard for me to, and I, and I, you know, it's just, I have to think about it more, to see the harm done to internal employees when the, the individual never even really, truly never even worked here. It was, there was an offer letter and, and so like if there was actual harm done, I, you know, I have to understand that better. Uh, but it, you know, conflating two different issues, the issue of moving forward with, you know, visions and ideals of, uh, you know, racial equity within our walls and things like that, that's great. And that's something that we have set out goals for and we should move that forward. But, uh, to say we're, you know, we're jumping on this because of this, I, I don't know that, that, it just, that, I don't know, that doesn't, it doesn't feel right or seem right. So I don't know, I think there's two issues and I think they're being conflated a little bit.
I would agree with about the relationships that, you know, in, in working through problems, it's really productive. I never had a hour-long conversation on the phone with the previous sheriff, you know, that just never happened. And there were some contentious issues. We yelled at each other in meetings and walked out pretty mad. Um, but, you know, the fact that I was able to do that and I'm not saying I caused the result, but the, you know, sheriff was talking to a lot of people, but he did reach out and he did reach out in a way that I'd never seen before. And a change was made for whatever, you know, different reasons for that. But that's a positive that we can build on to like when we have these issues that are harmful or difficult or contentious, to be able to work together, that's important. But you can propose anything you want, Commissioner.
Okay.
And I, I, I commit to you to look at it and give you my feedback on it. I don't know if anybody else will be interested, but we could certainly do that.
Okay, great. I can definitely draft something up and work with you on it and see how our seatmates feel about it. Um, and I'll be really mindful of the feedback that I'm hearing now. So I'm hearing two action items. One is I dropped a statement and then the other thing on the table is creating some sort of equitable avenue for concerns to be heard. And I'm wondering how everybody feels about the best way to approach that. Um, I spoke with Commissioner Fornier before and kinda shared an idea about potentially having some sort of open forum. And like I said, forum might be the wrong word. I don't know what we would call it, but some sort of event or meeting to allow staff to come and vocalize their concerns. Because I do agree with Commissioner Fornier a little bit when you mentioned the word harm. I think that harm has definitely been caused or we wouldn't have been receiving the letter. But I do, like after scanning the letter again, the only thing that really substantiates the exact type of harm that was caused is this small piece about the loss of trust, fear and devaluation of concerns. And I'd like to know more about that. Um, I'm curious to know what exactly they mean by that, because it looks like, uh, that's the only exact, you know, component of harm that they've actually listed here. But I think that if we gave them an opportunity to kind of elaborate on that, um, that would be good. I'm just curious about how we would do that.
I have lots of thoughts. Um, and I'm trying, I guess. Because at the end, it's, like all of this, it personally impacts me and my family. And so I'm, I'm really trying to tread carefully in what I say. Um... Statements don't fix harm caused. And it just provides the people making them an opportunity to, sure, they acknowledge it, but it doesn't fix anything. And so for me, I don't believe in these grand statements. Um, if it's something where, and it was the same thing when we passed the racial equity crisis in Thurston County and I was very strong against this, when I was like, if we're gonna pass a resolution and we're gonna do this proclamation, I want to see some action items behind it. Because just saying that there is a crisis or acknowledging that maybe the hiring was not, you know, caused harm is not doing anything to actually fix the harm that's already been caused. And so just putting out a statement to put out a statement, I, I am not in agreement with that. Um... In terms of the resource groups, I, to have a, a, just a big open forum, you have to actually think about the imbalances of power as well, right? And acknowledge that there is imbalances of power and there, you also like honestly, I honestly think the best way to approach this is by having DV set up these affinity groups or employer resource groups, whatever it is, because it provides an opportunity for our employees to actually have that safe space, uh, to provide actual feedback without having the board or the county manager or just executive level being there, right? That provides that again, that imbalance of power and then it provides that fear of retaliation, even though there might not be, right? But it just provides this avenue for, for employees. So DV already has like an idea set up on how to proceed with this, right? And so I think at this opportunity is when we need to listen to our racial equity program manager and have, you know, and push the, um, and support her in setting up these groups. Um, and she's going to probably get something out to employees. And then after that, I think at this point is when the board really needs to really take a step back and let the people who are doing the work do the work.
I'm, I'm try, I, I'm, I think it's important to let DV do her work. And I like, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I don't have the words to kinda like share what I'm thinking, but like, it, it would almost be improper to do otherwise, because, you know, like, I'm, I'm a white guy, right? I have no business speaking on behalf of the BIPOC community. And then I look at this, the letter, and I don't know, I mean, I could just be a bunch of other people who look just like me signing that letter, speaking on behalf of the, the BIPOC community and what is, it's like, it's on like a white savior kind of thing that makes me very uncomfortable. And so unless you're saying, you know, DV, we've, you know, we've hired you to help us work through this problem, we're empowering you and also we're trusting you to help us with this. And if we don't do that and you just take the letter signed by a bunch of people whose names I don't, I don't even, can't even read, you're, you know, it's, it's very like, it's disingenuine in my mind and it's, it's stepping on her, it's stepping on the, the council that's been set up to support the deliberation and discussion of these issues. And, you know, I, I, there, I don't think anybody should ever be scared to turn a letter in with their opinions on it, but it, it, it just, it, it almost rubs me the wrong way that they also disrespected kind of her position in her office. Or, or, you know, like in, in my mind, that like, that's where that discussion, you know, belongs.
And I'm just gonna jump in because I hear what you're saying and I completely agree. We have a racial equity program manager and she should be able to be, you know, part of the conversation because that's her line of work and she's a subject matter expert. However, DV was supportive of the letter, so this in no way disrespected.
Yeah, do you, I, I don't know supportive, I think I would say she was aware of the letter.
Okay.
That's as strong a statement as I would gleaned from her as well.
Yeah.
The existence of it was
No.
Was no.
Right.
Okay. We, maybe that's something that we should talk to her directly about then, instead of speaking on what we've gleaned from her, because my, my impression was different.
Yesterday, I met with her.
Well, I mean, as a board possibly, because it sounds like we want to have her lead the way on this and I think that's a good idea. Um, having her set up any, any kind of group related to these issues, I think is a great idea. And I'm not suggesting that we as a board jump in and say, and be the saviors and do all these things without more input to understand exactly what's being asked here. Because, yeah, I agree with you, Wayne, like it's a kind of a savior complex thing if we jump in and just say, oh, we got a letter, forty-two signatures, we're gonna do everything on the letter because it's generalized to everybody in the community or, or our staff. I'm not suggesting that at all. Um, to Commissioner Mejia's point about releasing a statement just to release a statement, um, that's not at all what's being asked here and I completely agree with you that statements don't fix harm. They have to be followed up with action, which is what I'm suggesting and asking the board to do, is not only release a statement acknowledging that we at least received a letter and that we're going to utilize the information we have to take action and make a change, and then we have to follow through and take action. That's completely correct. I agree with that a hundred percent. Um, I'm just hoping that we can kinda get that conversation going and potentially release a statement that we're working on it, because otherwise that's not taking any action either. Releasing a statement is taking action, it's a first step to taking action, but then we have to follow through with what we say we're gonna do.
I agree with all that and I, I, but I wanna see like, to me, the ra, like, the, the concern about, well, is this a group of white employees or are we white savior?
And we don't know that, like...
And going around the, like, that's where the racial equity council, like when I was voting for them to be created, that this is what I was hoping that they, you, they're like a group of community members with lived experience, with so, with not, not, you know, not necessarily formal expertise, although some of them do have formal expertise, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion expertise, but to be able to kind of come to us with thoughts and suggestions and recommendations around things like this. So I would want, as much as, we can put this all in DV's back, but I hope that when we say that, we mean like the, including the council as well, cause I think they could be important contributors to, to some of these things. Leonard?
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, as a new county manager, I, I would really like the opportunity to sit with DV and to get an overview on where the county's at, this plan, uh, how she plans to move forward, what she has, what she has in the works and to understand that so that we can, so that I can have that information as we navigate these, these top issues and we work through these, um, these dynamics that are in, in, in every workplace when there's decisions that are made and it, you know, and it, it has a ripple effect and we figure out where do we move forward and bring back recommendations ultimately.
To the extent, Commissioner Claus, to the extent that your, that your proposed statement will be more about accelerating our racial equity plan work and less about the hiring of Burbank, I'm gonna probably feel more comfortable with it, because like what you said there at the end, I think I'm totally in agreement with that. I mean, if we can just use this as a way to, um, get ourselves, you know, moving in the right direction versus, you know, going back into the sheriff and, and this, that and the other and who is harmed and by what, you know, that's gonna fit my comfort level better, Commissioner.
When we're talking about accelerating, anything having to do with racial equity work, we're gonna miss a lot of components. Racial equity work is not to be accelerated, it is slow and painful process. And so if we're gonna be accelerating it, we're gonna be missing a lot of things. And so I just want everyone to be conscious of that when we're talking about accelerating racial equity work. Like this is...
I just think, Commissioner Mejia, I, I, I appreciate that, but I, I think we all can agree that we expect when we pass the emergency declaration two and a half years ago, I wanna say, almost three years ago now, we all expect it to be further along today than at that time, if you'd asked me where I thought we would have gotten to, what would have gotten done. Um, you know, it's been difficult with the new pro, with two different program managers, with, with reg, with council members that were disruptive, with council members that were not showing up to meetings and then, and then not, and then leaving the council. All those things have put us behind in a way, not that, not that anything was gonna get solved in three years, but I, I'm disappointed with how, you know, what, some of the things that I would have liked to have seen, all the tr, the implicit bias training stuff that our first program manager had launched, but it got like high, we, we have, we paused it all because we had a big gap there where we were trying to recruit and find a new program manager. So I just, when I say accelerate, I don't mean make the work not appropriate to the speed of the work, but just to make sure that we're, we're back on track, cause we, we were off track for, it's nobody's fault really, but per, per se or whatever, but, but that's what I meant by that, just not, not to mean that the work can be done quicker than it can be done.
And maybe accelerating is not the right word.
Yeah.
Cause rushing it totally, we will miss, you're right, Commissioner Mejia, it is slow and painful. Um, so maybe prioritizing it is a better word. We could find a, a different language to not imply that we're going to rush through anything. Um, we do need to be really, really careful and, and, uh, I don't think that rushing anything is a good idea. So, I mean, I would love your input, Commissioner Mejia, if we do decide to release a statement. Um, I think that you're, you're... Um, I think that your, your thoughts are extremely valuable, and you're bringing up a lot of good points. And I would like to maybe work with you as well to write a statement that doesn't insinuate we're going to do anything rushed or create more harm by trying to fix something.
Good job.
Okay. It's twelve oh nine. Do we have, I mean, move on from this topic? And I think we hit all the other commissioner items. So we come to the end of the agenda, and we will adjourn, and we'll be back in this room maybe fifteen minutes or so.
Yeah, give us about fifteen minutes um, to reset the room.
Turn around.
Sit back down.
Lunch. Yep.